Good evening, everyone, and good evening, people at home. Welcome to the regular Tuesday, August 18th, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Commissioner Sorensen is a little under the weather tonight and won't be with us, but we do have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order and begin, as we usually do, with a moment of silence. And if you would just join us, Sandin, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. We have a few moments set aside now for Planning Commissioner comments or announcements. Is there anything that you'd like to bring?
Let's take those first. I'll go.
Whoever? Go ahead. Richard, we're counting on you.
Yeah, okay. We have, kind of a big, big thing happened to this area about a week ago. NOAA, the National Oceanographic Association, has moved the application for the Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary to the second phase, and it's getting, it's going through the process right now, and this is a pretty exciting time. There's a lot of, lot of, lot of people that are supporting it, Coastal Alliance, Surf Rider, Sierra Club, and many individuals, though mainly, and people across our oceans. There are Hawaiian, Hawaiian brothers there are also in support of that. So it's, it's pretty exciting times now with regards to that.
Jerry, you?
Well, this isn't as exciting as that, but there's been a rash of trailer thefts, tool trailer thefts in the area. I personally know of three out of Cayucus and one that happened to me this last weekend. So if anybody has any information on them, it would be great for them to call the Morro Bay PD, and anybody else in the building trades, be aware that this is happening on a regular basis, so I would take extra precautions and, you know, boot up your trailers and, just take care of them. Thanks.
Michael? Okay. Couple of things. This is a little bit personal, I apologize, but our next-door neighbor has lost her cat, Bevo. So if any of you have run, she's run away, so if any of you have run across a little gray and white kitty that's kind of skittish, please get in touch with me and I'll get that kitty back to where it belongs. And the second announcement, which is probably the least exciting of all, is the General Plan Advisory Committee had its first meeting last week. We are in the process of constituting a subcommittee that will review the RFP and the response to the request for proposals for consultants who will actually be working on the general plan, so that process is moving forward. And these are, all of the G-PAC meetings are public meetings, so any of you who would like to become involved, please, you know, feel free to do so. Okay. We're done? So this, that brings us to the public comment period. This is the general public comment period, so anyone who would like to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda tonight, please come to the microphone and we'd love to hear from you. No one, no takers. Okay. So then we will move on to the consent calendar, and our consent calendar this evening consists of the approval of minutes from the Planning Commission meeting on June 16th, and also the current and advanced planning and processing list. Wouldn't anyone like to make comments or corrections on either of those items? Scott, do you have any input on the planning list, or?
No, I'm still just receiving file.
Okay. It's getting longer. Yeah. That's a good thing. So do we have a motion then to accept this consent calendar?
I'll move to accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. So moving on then quickly into our public hearings, our first public hearing, our only public hearing this evening, is for case number CP 0-419 and UP 0-383, which involves a proposed development at 3420 Toro Lane here in Morro Bay, California, and I believe our staff report is going to be given by Whitney. Thank you.
I got a recommendation.
Eventually, eventually it's going to be given.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. So this is a use permit and coastal development permit for a property at 3420 Toro Lane. The applicants are Jeanie and Greg Frye. The project involves construction of a new single-family house. It's approximately 1,500 square feet and an attached garage that's approximately 575 square feet. It's on a lot that is about 10,000 square feet. You can see up on the screen, let's see if I can make this mouse work, oh. It's a beachfront lot between Toro Lane and Atascadero State Beach. There's also a mitigated negative declaration with this project, and so you're going to be asked to review or act on that as well. This is just a quick lot map diagram of the site. The orange outlined lot is the lot that we're speaking about tonight, and there is a, in yellow, there's a drainage easement that is partly on this site to accommodate a big culvert and drainage channel running under Highway 1 and also Toro Lane. This is just a view of the, just kind of continuing on with orientation here, a view of the site pretty much as it looks now. This was a habitat map prepared as part of a biological assessment analysis for the property. That was required because this site does have environmentally sensitive habitat zoning over it, and, ooh, let's see if I can work my mouse again. Where's my mouse? There is a, what can be characterized as a stream corridor, that same drainage I had just mentioned. There's the concrete swale up here, and there's a culvert that empties into that, and then it continues along just about this. So it does sort of touch into the lot just a bit on this northerly side. There's some rock, exposed bedrock here, and the only riparian vegetation associated with is this willow shown in green. And the other area of sensitive environmental habitat is coastal dune ash shown in this light pink color in this northwesterly corner of the site. Oh, and, and there's the trail. Do, 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 do. Okay. So our zoning and coastal land use program require setbacks from environmentally sensitive habitat and require, in urban areas, a 50-foot setback from coastal dune ash and also from stream corridors. However, both our local coastal plan, including our zoning ordinance, allow for a lesser stream setback when the full 50 feet, which is shown in this line up here, would effectively preclude development of the site, which would happen in this case. You can see that the, the 50-foot setback here from, wait, actually, it goes right here, from the coastal dune ash kind of overlaps what, a part of what would have been the 50-foot setback from the stream corridor ash. And so it's just in certain areas where that reduction to 25 feet would really be necessary to enable some development of the site. So given those constraints, the architect for the project kind of came up with this building footprint. The project would be accessed from Toro Lane through some undeveloped right-of-way, as many, many houses in Morro Bay are. This also shows the required five-foot setback at the northern property line and a little patio area out here. And from that, they developed a floor plan, so you have these plans, and I believe the applicant might go through these a little bit, too, but just for folks in the audience and at home. This is a photo sim rendering of the house on the lot with the sort of very mature landscaping. They also gave us, of course, a color and material board, so it's, I think we even have a sample of the proposed siding, which is sort of a, it shows up pretty light here. I think it's slightly darker, but we can look at that sample later on. It's almost a taupe color in some ways, but maybe it shows up lighter in real life. Excuse me. This is wooden garage door composition, sort of charcoal-colored shingle roof with higher relief, and like a black trim color on the windows and fascia. So now I'll go through these elevations, the scene from Toro. Sometimes elevations, as you know, are a little funny to read because we're, buildings aren't completely rectangular, you get odd angles. So on the site, the garage sits at an angle to the rest of the house. This is at the other end, looking from the beach side, the house, you can see, it literally just gets narrower and narrower to accommodate that dune ash buffer. And this is the north side elevation, and along the south side elevation, which would include the main entry, which is about the middle of the screen. The architect also prepared some section drawings for us, so just to give a sense of how this building would sit on the lot. This is through the garage. This is a section drawing through the middle of the building, and then right at the very end. That end part is, I think, less than 11 feet in width. And then this is a section view of the patio that comes toward the ocean out from that little end part, and, so you can see, you get some sense of, there'll be some retaining on the southerly side that ranges like two to three feet, I believe that wall is, and there's a proposal for, they would have to have some kind of railing on the top of And then this is a massing study from the beach view, just kind of illustrating how the project might look in comparison to some other projects nearby, single-family homes nearby. In the staff report, there, as always, is a zoning compliance table. This project is in the S2 overlay, which limits height to 17 feet for buildings with a minimum pitch of 4 and 12. This project meets that. Only the central part of the building would even be close to 17 feet. It meets other rear, front, side yard setbacks and the two covered-in-closed parking spaces. I would note that the garage is about five feet from the actual property line, which is allowed in our zoning ordinance when there's enough of a grade change between the front of the property to the middle of the right-of-way, and in this case, it's about 10 feet of grade change. It wouldn't read that way so much from Toro Lane because there is an extensive amount of undeveloped right-of-way between the lot and the actual roadway of Toro Lane. So this is just a quick look. Coastal access is one of the issues that has come up in reviewing this property. So this just gives you a little bit of an overview, and I know that the applicant has some additional slides that are a little more detailed. Where that yellow pin is, is the site, and you can see the trail running through the lot. You can also see, okay, mouse, you can also see that, you know, there's other coastal access in the area. It's, we're pretty lucky that way in Morro Bay, actually. And I'm sure there will be additional discussion about access, but right now I'm just going to move through my overview. Another issue that has been raised with this project is the whole notion of coastal versus canyon bluff. This is one of those properties on the coast that has, you know, has to sort of look at one of each. It sits well behind the, the actual top of coastal bluff is right about here, it continues on up there, and then the canyon bluff kind of runs alongside the trail through the site. This map was prepared, as you can see, by Earth Systems Specific, Rick Gorman, geologist in consultation with Mark Giant, Mark Giant, Mark Johnson, the Coastal Commission geologist. So that's what they prepared, just to clarify for purposes of setback. Our ordinance speaks of coastal setbacks, and in the Morro Bay ordinance, we don't really distinguish so much, particularly this coastal versus canyon situation, but all up and down the California coast, you know, this becomes an issue on certain properties where you have drainages running down to the beach. And then, of course, it's on the beach, and we have a lot of talk of sea level rise these days, so I put this in here. I know it's difficult to read. I do have a larger-scale exhibit that, again, was prepared by Earth Systems, but, and again, in consultation with Coastal Commission engineers. But generally, I just wanted to show, this is the finished floor elevation of the house, and this sea level rise analysis was prepared, sort of assuming a very worst-case scenario of 100-year flood, storm surge, tsunami, sea level rise, and all of that might take the water up, by their calculations, to about 17 feet plus in elevation, and the finished floor sits at 33 feet. So the conclusion was, it should, it should be fine. We have also had, I think you'll have at least one person speaking to the notion of wanting, here's the, here is the lot, and the footprint is pretty much along in here. I know we probably will hear from the neighbor next door on Lot 5, right here by my cursor, wishing to have the development moved further back on the lot. They're pretty much as far back as they can go with that five-foot setback. Previously, in discussions of a road abandonment, because there is so much undeveloped right-of-way here, I guess he was sort of looking to maybe reopen that conversation, but that was, that was looked at earlier and pretty much withdrawn because a lot of people were not, were not anxious to abandon this, have the city abandon this section right-of-way. So I think that pretty much concludes my slides. I would just, once again, reiterate that this project was subject to environmental review, and in addition to action on the coastal development plan and the conditional use permit, the Planning Commission's also being asked to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, which includes environmental mitigation that would become part of the project in order to reduce potential impacts to a less-than-significant level. Attachment 1 to the resolution outlines those, just sort of summarizes those mitigation and monitoring measures. Staff is recommending adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and approval based on the findings and conditions that are in your staff report. And I just would note that this project came to us, I think it was about December of 2013. It was a slightly larger project. We have worked since that time with both the applicant, various geologists and biologists and staff at Coastal Commission to try and address the environmental impact issues, as well as, as I mentioned earlier, sea level rise and some of the geology bluff setback kinds of issues. So I would say that the applicant has worked really hard to get at least to this point, and staff is supporting this project. We did get an email from Daniel Robinson at Coastal Commission earlier today noting, requesting that we add in addition of a condition regarding shoreline protective structures that they're, that they be prohibited here, and I have language for that when we get to that point. So now I'll be happy to try and answer questions, which.
So are there, are there questions for staff?
Oh, oh, let me, I'm sorry, just one last thing. How could I overlook this? This is a public comment that we've, is a public comment that we have received on the project. A number of, I've got roughly 75, oops, I think you've got some in your packet, I've got roughly 75 of these Prescriptive Rights Study Public Use questionnaire and declarations. I'm sure we'll hear about that. And a number of things were put online. I think there was a packet of letters in support of the project, just a general packet to share up there that I put before the meeting, and we have been posting this public comment on the city's webpage as it's come in, and we've been able to keep up with it. But we definitely received some interest on the project. Thank you for reminding me about that. Okay. Now I'm done.
Okay. Questions?
Yes, Whitney? Do you know who the owner of, of the associated lot, Lot Number 22, is?
Oh, I wish I had that.
That's the subject lot. 22 is the subject lot.
I have an exhibit here. 22 is a subject lot. 23, there's.
23, there's an adjacent lot.
There's an adjacent lot. There are two separate APNs, and generally, that indicates a slightly different ownership.
It can, but it may not. Is there, do you, there may not even be separate lots.
Oh, these are clearly separate lots.
They're clearly separate lots?
There was a parcel map approved by the City of Morro Bay in 1972, and I actually have a copy of that here.
You showed it to him earlier, didn't you?
Yeah, I just showed the parcel map.
Okay.
I mean, yeah.
And then you, you don't know who the owner is on the adjacent lot, then?
I'll let the applicant answer that question.
Okay, great.
Any more, any other questions?
Whitney, I just want to be clear, it's not within our prerogative, from what I'm reading in the packet, to suggest or discuss our inclusion of the path as a mitigating piece. That has to be done separately.
The path as it stands now, where it crosses through the property now, if, the whole notion of prescriptive right, I'm going to let Scott chime in here, too. This is something that I'm sure we will hear testimony on. If that prescriptive right were perfected, which would happen in a court and not here, if the city were even interested in pursuing perfection of that prescriptive right, that would be a council direction. We can explore public access elsewhere on the site. Whether or not that satisfies those who have submitted this petition remains to be seen.
And the city is satisfied with the description of the canyon and bluff that the Coastal Commission accepted?
Yes, we are.
And do we have an idea how the grading is working? The drawings, I know, are pretty early on, but do we have any idea what's really happening around the driveway in terms of what it looks like relative to the streetscape? It looks to me like we're dropping quite a bit before we get into the garage. It doesn't, I don't see anything that suggests it's elevated with walls like the adjacent property to the north. I don't see anything suggesting the grade is being brought up where there's kind of a dish that's likely to be formed there. It's very confusing to me as to what goes on there.
Right.
What we're, maybe that's a better question for later to ask you.
Well, I can just say that we are kind of in a preliminary plan stage, as far as that goes. The plans that we do have, the sheet that shows those section drawings, it might be a different sheet, but there would be a certain amount of fill, there would have to be, in that undeveloped right-of-way area, just to, to make the driveway work. Exactly, they've done calculations on, on the rough cut and fill, which we asked for. Exactly how that would be worked out, I'm going to let the architect give you some idea, or you can bring that up with him, too.
And I guess the last question I have is, the Coastal Commission saw the two renderings that are part of this package that were in your presentation, the one from the beach and the one from Highway 1?
Yes. They have received a copy of the staff report, as well as having reviewed the environmental review.
That's all I have. I just, I'm just going to follow up on, a little bit on Michael's first question. Certainly, certainly, it's the, we'll do the prerogative of the city council to determine whether or not to pursue an investigation with regard to prescriptive easement, but would it be inappropriate for this body to make a recommendation to the council?
You certainly could make that recommendation, and were we to go, at the end of this proceeding, to that end, then that's, my recommendation would be that we make a recommendation, that the, that the Planning Commission make a recommendation along those lines, so that we would be directed to bring that issue before the council for consideration, moving it forward, realizing that, that that would, you know, require a substantial redesign of the project.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, then we will open the public comment period. Traditionally, we would ask to hear first from the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Good evening, Chairman Taft, and we've lost a commissioner, but good evening, commissioners. My name is Rachel Covesti, and I'm representing Greg and Janie Frye in this application. I just have a quick, I hope, a quick PowerPoint presentation to walk you through. Thank you very much to staff, Whitney, you did a spectacular job presenting that staff report. It's very comprehensive. So I will actually probably be skipping a number of my slides that have already been covered. So you know the project request, about a 1,500-square-foot home on a 10,019-square-foot lot. Again, the height of the structure at its maximum height, 17 feet. Proposed lot coverage, 21 percent. And grading, 3,483 square feet within the parcel and about 1,500 square feet within the right-of-way to accommodate that driveway access. Here's the location on Toro Lane, with which I know you're all familiar. I thought that this was important to analyze the neighborhood character. So up and down Toro Lane, there are a couple of outlying structures. This is all single-family residential. There is one very small unit, 450 square feet, one very large unit approaching 6,000 square feet. But you'll see that the vast majority of these units are within the 2,000 to 3,000-square-foot range, which would make the Frye-proposed residence about the third smallest on the street. The project site, again, 10,019-square-foot parcel, very sloping topography from the southeast to the northwest, which, and of course, that drainage, all of which kind of proposes, presents a grading and planning challenge. As Whitney mentioned, the original application for this residential project went in either late 2013, I think it was accepted for processing in January of 2014. The original site plan looked like this. It was about 2,200-square-foot worth of home and 550 square feet of garage. That included three bedrooms and three-and-a-half baths. And you can see the square shape as opposed to what you see now, the very irregular-shaped structure. There was input received throughout the last two years from city staff, from Coastal Commission staff, including extensive comments from the Coastal Commission geologist, their chief engineer, their environmental specialists, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the project technical experts, and the public. Based upon all of that input, the revised plans, again, show a 1,500-square-foot home with a 579-square-foot garage. The floor plan has been reduced to two bedrooms and three baths. You've seen the elevations. I would like to point out that this is a very well-articulated building, differing roof lines, lots and lots of massing steps. Color and materials board, again, all designed specifically to subordinate to the surrounding Speaking of which, I do want to highlight that the conceptual landscape plan includes all coastal native drought-tolerant species. Right now, you saw that, with a couple of exceptional spots with Escha on it, a large majority of this property is currently inhabited by annual grasslands and ice plant. This is a golden opportunity to restore habitat value along the coast. And this is extremely colorful. I think perhaps Disney might have generated this visual simulation. But it does give you some feel for the textural elements that would be restored to the site. This is a site photo with the house footprint actually state. So you can see the topographic challenges and the fact that the lot does slope significantly from the southeast moving northwest. Site constraints, we've talked about, the dune setback of 50 feet. We're actually setting back from the coastal dune, although the requirement is 50, the house actually is located about 70 feet from the coastal dune. And then the coastal creek buffer, a minimum 25 feet, and as you move seaward, that increases significantly to about 50 feet. And the Coastal Commission does concur with these reduced buffers. And Whitney already showed you this one, so continue. Detail, this shows the ocean bluff. And Whitney's much better at the mouse, so I'm going to skip that part. That's okay. So here's the Coastal Commission response. This was received in July. And they say quite explicitly, "The redesigned project appears to be consistent with the LCP's requirement to protect scenic and visual qualities of coastal areas." On biological, they say the redesigned project is setback 50 feet from the furthest extent of coastal dune habitat, consistent with the LCP. They have a discussion about reduced setbacks from Creek Escha and conclude that, given U.S. Fish and Wildlife and California Fish and Wildlife concurrence, that that is also an appropriate reduction. And finally, they actually compliment the project on the mitigation measures that have been put into place, erosion control, stormwater management, particularly habitat restoration Another portion of the Coastal Commission response dealt specifically with geology and bluff setbacks. Mark Johnson, the Coastal Commission geologist, has been with that State Department for about 25 years. He has actually written books on how to locate and identify coastal bluffs. And his response to the MND, it says, "The commission's staff geologist agrees with the assessment and appropriateness of using the calculations that were done by Earth Systems to determine bluff setbacks on the project site. They acknowledge that the 70 feet from the identified coastal bluff edge is well beyond the minimum setback required, and the project would not be adversely affected by sea level rise or bluff retreat over the economic life of the project," which is typically identified as between 75 and 100 years. And then finally, they do address public access and recreation. They have requested that the city analyze the possibility of placing a trail within the buffer area on the project site. I think that the city, that city staff has done an outstanding analysis of this, and we'll talk more about beach access in a moment. So the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and California Department of Fish and Wildlife, both have indicated that their concerns from the 2013-14 plans and initial study, and I think MND as well, have been addressed with the project revisions. So beach access. There are 20 identified points of public beach access within a third of a mile, including two reasonably accessible trails. Six points, and by reasonably accessible, I mean for folks with very limited mobility. So to the north of the site, you know that you have the parking lot and very flat, flat beach access there. And then at about the 816-foot mark, you have an additional limited-mobility access. There are six points of access with very similar topography within 500 feet, so that's about two city blocks. And here they are. 112 feet south of the proposed project. You can see, this is a fairly well-used trail. 195, a little bit steeper. This one is interesting. 280 feet to the south, there is a beach access. And I wanted to point out, and I wish I had a pointer, but I don't, you can see, that's okay, you can see the, at the tail end of this access, significant erosion. This one needs some attention, and obviously, we're not asking for that at this point. But this does show that points of access along the coast are not necessarily an unadulterated good, that there, they do present maintenance issues, they present habitat loss issues, and erosion and sedimentation issues. Moving on down, you can see here, two beach points of access within 50 feet. There are actually three points of access within 100 feet, right in this neighborhood. Again, I think many of us who are very concerned with protection of coastal resources would say that's probably at least one trail too many. And then here's the third, well-marked, well-used, well-loved. I haven't exhaustively looked at each one of these, while I haven't included them in your package, but 18, I'm sorry, 816 feet south, we have a very nice, again, wide trail from the road, well-marked, well-signed, well-used. And I thought this was an interesting feature, children's poster, "Protect coastal dune habitat." As you know, the Coastal Commission has been working with state parks and jurisdictions up and down the coast of California to try to consolidate points of access. The Coastal Act mandates two things. It mandates public access along the coast, and it also mandates resource protection. And it is the Coastal Commission's responsibility to adjudicate between these two goods, and I think, obviously, with a certified LCP, that responsibility falls to the city. We had some very nice project support from the community, and actually, like our supporters, to raise your hands. Thank you. I'm not forcing them to speak tonight. But I thought that this one was actually particularly telling, and I'll read just tiny portions of it. "I encourage the commission to approve the currently designed residence without requiring beach access through the property. There are already several high-quality beach accesses near the site, so adding another would simply compromise land better used for natural habitat." And then it goes on to repeat that the state of California encourages coastal access, but rarely at the expense of habitat quality. And talks about the Estero Bluff State Park in that regard as well. So in conclusion, we are requesting the planning commission adopt the staff findings, and I know that there's going to be an additional condition for shoreline protection. The applicants are comfortable working with that as well. And finally, we'd like to acknowledge that it is certainly anticipated that this project will be appealed to council and will be appealed to the Coastal Commission. We anticipate that we're going to have some folks who are interested in exhausting their administrative appeals. So if you have any questions, I would love to reserve a couple of minutes of time to answer any of those that you may have, and then we would ask for a decision tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, Rachel, stick around, we'll kind of get your questions at the end of the public comment period.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So then we'll open it up for anyone else who would like to speak. We have a lot of folks here tonight. I would just remind you to, you know, try and keep your comments within the three minutes because that way everybody gets to speak. So whoever would like to take the microphone, come forward.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. My name is Brad Snook. I'm co-chair of our Accounting chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. Kind of early on into reviewing the aspects of this project. But at first blush, I mean, the first thing that kind of hits you is the trail going straight through the property. And I would say that's a well-worn trail. I would ask the commissioners to consider why that trail is so worn compared to all the other trails in the area. If there's so many other trails there for beach access, why aren't the other ones used if they're better for beach access? So obviously, people have a choice to go to the beach a certain way, and it's obvious by looking at some of those pictures that they're choosing to go to the beach that Now, as far as the environmentally sensitive habitat, and, you know, I applaud the builders and the property owners for considering what they plant and going with the native species. Some of that is ice plant, apparently. Some of that is going to be compromised environmentally sensitive habitat. So as the commissioners move forward and considering that, I hope you, I hope you consider the percentage of what's already there, whether that's native, and the bonus of going with the development and what will come in, because what you might get is a property that looks so far different compared to the surroundings that people can't tell what's native or what's not native. The prescriptive easement, that's something I think that the chapter is going to have to consider in the future. And it's an issue that Surf Rider has joined in, in the past, in supporting prescriptive easements. So that's my statement. Thank you for hearing it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, first, I want to thank you for reading through the materials that I provided. Thank you for reading through the materials that I provided...
Sorry, name?
Earlier. Sorry, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Bill McLennan. I live at 3396 Beachcomber, which is the small house on Beachcomber adjacent to the project. My father purchased this property in 1970, and it's been part of our family for 45 years. My wife and I now spend a substantial amount of time there. So I'm certainly knowledgeable about the area and the issues that are involved here. And I'm trying to raise concerns, I think, that we should consider. Truly, this gully is a treasure. It has abundant wildlife, it has access to the beach that's unique in the sense that it's available for people that have more limited ability to get around. It's in constant use. Our house overlooks the trail, and there are people using it constantly. A lot of the trails that were mentioned before by the speaker who preceded me are informal, steep, unusable, and not really adequate for the vast majority of the people in our community. So that's my, just some simple comments there. I think we need to move carefully and slowly when we consider what we may lose if we don't consider each aspect of this project carefully. The Fryes are a lovely family, and I hope that we can work out something where everyone is satisfied and they have a place that they can enjoy this beautiful area as well. But I think we would be disingenuous if we didn't address the issues that concern all of us. Chuck Close is also here. He's a neighbor that's adjacent to me, and I spoke with Ted Nakata, who also lives on our street, about the coastal bluff issues that I want to talk about briefly, and he's certainly in support of our position. The problem that's unstated here is there's, from the end of the residence facing the beach, there's a 40-foot retaining wall that drops three-and-a-half feet. It's not readily discernible from the plans, but with a three-and-a-half-foot drop for 40 feet across the bluff, you're moving about 1,500 to 2,000 cubic feet of this bluff. This is not insignificant. The bluff that you see will be substantially demolished by the patio and retaining wall and the drop that's placed there. This coastal bluff area is something that is truly going to be threatened by this project, and it just hasn't been addressed. The pictures and the renderings and the drawings just don't show it. So we're dealing with a substantial issue here. We have a lot to lose, and how do we look, and what do we look for guidance? The issue here is, that goes even beyond the Coastal Commission's report, is what's a coastal bluff? How do you, how do you transition from the part of the bluff that's facing the ocean to the canyon bluff? And does it still meet that definition? Clearly, this happens along the coast often, where you have these indentations, and we have to decide what's a coastal bluff and what isn't. What we're provided with is two regulations, both of which have to be complied with. The Morro Bay regulation says a coastal bluff is defined when the toe meets beach sand. And also, the Coastal Commission defines a coastal bluff by a bluff where its toe is subject to marine erosion. These are simple, common-sense definitions. They could include anything they want. They could include anything they wanted, but this is the way they chose to protect the coast, because protecting the coast is a high priority. What we have here--
I think, if you could wrap it up, it'd be great. I think you have three minutes.
What we have here is the photographs I provided you that demonstrate that both of these criterias are met in this case. In other words, there's marine erosion, you can see the swell running up that canyon, the toe of the bluff is touched by the marine erosion, and at the base of those bluffs are beach sand. The reports that the Coastal Commission used was a wave study. They didn't, that I'm aware of, consider these photographs, they didn't look at the site. They're in Santa Cruz, and they were given one wave study that said there'd been no historic erosion. So on that basis, they declined to find that this was a coastal bluff. You're free to find anything you want. You're the fact-finders. You base your findings on the evidence, and you're not, you don't have to be overridden by an expert when the foundation for their opinion is not adequately supported. So I ask you to look at those photos. I think this project should be, there's creative things we can do, the abandonment issue. I'm getting the feeling you don't want to listen to me anymore, but the abandonment issue--
I think we need to be fair to everyone who's here.
Okay.
I'm just bringing my sign up to let you know I'm the one that collected the signatures for prescriptive rights or that investigation, which I think is a key pivotal point for this argument. My name's Betty Winholz. I want to touch on a few comments that were made earlier before I get into my prescriptive rights comment. First of all, the answer was not given as to who owns the adjacent lot, and I think it's the Fryes that own both lots, and I think it's important to note that, unless he needs to come up and say otherwise. And I think that becomes a core to this discussion, because if one buys two lots knowing that one's undevelopable because of the setbacks, because of prescriptive rights, because of ESHA, that the joining of those two lots by the same owner then means that that house can be moved and doesn't have to disrupt what's already there. And I'm not sure how you, if you're going to address that at all, but I think it's key to know that there's other options there for that property. Another point is, and to follow up on the bluff retaining, with this dirt that's going to be brought in as fill, so he, I assume, was talking about the retaining wall on the west, I'm concerned about the north. They're bringing in a lot of fill, how are you going to hold that fill up? Is there going to be another retaining wall there that holds up the middle of the house? I think that needs to be discussed. You've talked about flood or sea level rise, but you haven't talked about flooding, about what comes through that culvert from the other side. How is that going to, that hasn't been addressed at all. In terms of the right-of-way, I think it's important to note that that's not just right-of-way that's in front of the house. The city owns a lot in Fee, and it's deeper than a normal right-of-way. And that came up the last time this plot came before you, and I think that needs to be noted, because people asked that it be turned into parking for the bicycle connector from Cayucus. And so I think that's important to note. Points of access, I think, gets us back to where I want to speak to quickly, which is the idea of prescriptive rights. And you need to understand that prescriptive rights are a valuable property right, quote-unquote, according to the law, and just because there are other access points around this particular trail, doesn't mean you can negate this one. And so I have a piece of law that I'm going to submit. I am very sorry I did not make copies before I brought it down here, but I will submit it to staff, and hopefully, they'll make copies for you, that says that you, that basically what it says is that in 1972, the law prohibits a use after that time for becoming prescriptive right does not apply to land within 1,000 yards, okay, of the ocean, of which this is, okay? And so we have a right to prescriptive rights, and that investigation has to happen. You don't have choice as far as I can discern from the court, okay, that you have to do that. And so looking at alternative accesses is really not an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Good evening or good afternoon, Bill Martini. And when this project originally came up, my biggest concern was the city's property that they own in Fee, it's a very huge chunk of property that's almost the equivalent of oceanfront. And at that time, the Fryes were asking to purchase that or obtain it from the city, and that's where it came up, that the city should hang on to that property for a park, a parklet. I know we've been talking about parklets lately. It will be the, one of the ends of the bike trail system, and this entryway that services this two-car garage, the, both properties, when they were originally purchased, they were purchased as one property, and whether they're still in single ownership, I'm not sure. The point being is, you, I would suggest or recommend that you have one entryway that doesn't affect the bulk of this city park potential, that actually accesses both lots. Currently, there is a little finger lot that feeds into, originally for both of these lots for access, that's not being used by this lot. But if you come off Toro Lane, you know, you really consider a narrow driveway of sorts that will least impact the city Fee-owned property that will service both lots, and that way, you save a bulk of that property for, you know, future city use. The House to the North actually built a retaining wall, did a driveway, and they had it chained off for years, and that was also built on city Fee property. With it, there's an agreement in place, within 30 days' notice, they have to remove it, should the city ever ask for that. But the point being is, they use that for their own personal use, where that truly is also city or the public property. So that's one issue. The second issue is, this is actually, the front of the house is being built in a bluff, and my understanding is you're not allowed to build a house in a bluff. The actual top of the bluff starts at the neighbor's house and goes all the way down to the creek. There was an old tank road that cut into the bluff, and so the actual setback from a bluff is 25 foot from the top of the bluff, not from the center of the creek. Actually, the Coastal Commission talked about the 25-foot setback from the top of the bluff. So you might look into the ordinance that all of Morro Bay, including the Embarcadero, there are certain areas of the Embarcadero in South that you cannot build in the bluff. You have to set back 25 foot from the top of the bluff, and that includes creek bluffs in, anyway, I guess my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Chuck Close, and I have the property at 3390 Beachcomber, and I'm just here because Bill's time kind of ran out, so I'm going to get my three minutes in. I think this whole notion that this bluff is a streambed bluff just doesn't seem to meet the criteria that we have for identifying bluff areas that are coastal. So I think that definitely needs to be reexamined. I don't know how well the Coastal Commission did in their examination of this. I don't know if they took a firsthand look at it or whether they relied on photos. I personally know that across that gully, which has been labeled the stream gully, has been, six feet of that peeled off about 15 years ago from high tides. So it does happen, and there is erosion in that gully, and it is from the ocean. So by definition, it seems like that has to be a coastal bluff. That's it. Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm going to raise this up a little bit. Forgive me for reading off my phone, it's an attempt to stay concise and to keep my, yeah, my name is Christopher Fela. I live at 2945 Hemlock Avenue, near Del Mar, and I just want to say, I've known the Frye family for about three years, just around the same amount of time that they've owned this property. And knowing that this has been a dream for them for so long, it, honestly, it saddens me that they continue to face what I see as unnecessary resistance, especially after having modified, as you saw, their building plans to the point where their proposed home is a meager 21% of the lot. Specifically, I find it ironic that one of the obstacles they're facing has to do with a so-called public access trail that happens to be right in the middle of their private property. First of all, maintaining this trail is unnecessary, as we saw, there are multiple other access trails along the beach within, you know, an 800-foot span. But secondly, I think trying to preserve a public trail, it seems counterintuitive when it's so close to an environmentally sensitive habitat, something that, as you've seen, the Fryes are planning to really restore and to nurture as part of their building plan. I think that it's really a beautiful thing that they are planning and intending here, and I see it enhancing that whole side of the coastline. And, yeah, my suggestion, my thought, is that it's best for them to be able to move forward with their plans, especially in light of how far they've gone to accommodate the requests and sometimes even demands of everybody involved. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Wilke, and I am also a surfer, so that's nice. And I lived above, not on, that everybody, I lived on Tahiti for five years, from 2008, when we moved back from Costa Rica, with three small children, and we would walk every day down across the Yerba Buena, Highway 1 intersection. And to be honest, I don't remember at that time, and for years in there, that many people using that trail. It was there. Part of it, it's not sand, it doesn't fill back in, so when somebody asked earlier why, we need to consider why it's been there so long, part of it is on an area that's more of a dirt area. We haven't had a lot of rain for erosion, which maybe this winter we'll get, if we get the el nino for the water for us. But it also does cut across part of the bluff and go down. We chose to never use that with our kids, because there is access, it is so direct, and there's two or three others that were shown there. I'm just speaking in regards to that when people are doing it. I lived there, I had small kids, I had elderly parents who came. It is not an easy access at that point, from that standpoint, okay? Also, you had to go over a fence, so it was not easy access, because there was a fence you literally had to step over. Now, I realize whoever owned it beforehand didn't care, they didn't put up signs or do whatever, but I also taught my kids at that point, this is somebody else's land, you need to respect that a little bit, don't just jump a fence or go over that for that point. I'm not saying I never did, as a surfer, ever, but that was not direct to where we normally surfed. So, anyway, that was a little bit of a concern on that. And then the other thing was about, it doesn't seem, as a property owner in the city, it doesn't seem, if I own one piece of property here, another one there, or whatever, if they were bought as two separate, and again, that's something that needs to be determined for you guys, the laws say that that one, whether he bought it or didn't buy it, or I buy that one, that if I only have the one lot, and these are consistent with what the Commission did find, and we've worked before, I've worked with Ms. Winholz before, trying to save some trees in the park down where the old golf course is, and they were thorough. I mean, they're not an easy group to work with, with other things, but they have come back, and they've actually said that they've approved this. Maybe they have not seen it themselves straight forward, maybe they didn't come to visit, I'm not sure. But it sure seems that with our commission, or a group that has said, this looks like we can go forward with it, with also the Coastal Commission, that some of this does seem a little bit like, now I'm here, I don't want to have things changed for that. And my family's fifth gen, not me, excuse me, I'm a transplant, I've only been here 20 years, but my family indirectly there was on the initial city council board, and they've been here, and my kids are fifth generation Morro Bay. And so we do have a concern that is, we want to keep Morro Bay nice, we want to keep it to where our kids want to enjoy it too. But people have laws that we buy property under, and we hope that that's what we get to deal with, that it doesn't change on me because somebody else is upset that their view is going to change, even though, and to me, it looks like it's actually been taken care of, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Greg Frye. I live at 1725 Little Morro Creek Road. My wife, Jeannie, is here, and I first just wanted to thank you for hearing our presentation. I also want to thank everybody who has shown up in support, and I've specifically asked that maybe they not speak, knowing that this may be a very long hearing, but if you want to raise your hands, or if you at any point want to speak or comment, please feel free to do so. So my wife and I moved here 21 years ago. We actually bought our first house on Beachcomber, and when my twins were born, I spent almost, you know, every evening or every day jogging up and down the beach, and we'd typically go to the end there at North Point, that my kids learned to climb on those little rocks out there, and every day, we'd pass that property. So to be able to purchase that property was truly a dream can come true, something that we did not anticipate would ever happen, but it did. And so we were able to purchase it from the McClellan Family Trust, and went through the first year and a half developing plans, and then with the Coastal Commission comments from the first mitigated negative declaration, we decided to just kind of bypass the, you know, this Commission, get straight to the Coastal Commission, knowing that it would be appealed there, or presumably would be appealed there. And our goal in going to them was to define the building envelope with all of the restrictions that were present. And when I bought this property, I'm not a developer, I was extremely naive, I didn't realize that it would be difficult, looking at the paperwork that we got with the property, but I've learned a lot. And I would say this, that this past year, I have spent significant time with the Morro Bay planning staff and with the coastal staff, and yes, Mark Johnson, the geologist, has been on site, Daniel Robinson has been on site, Justin Burr's been on site. And so they have looked at this, they are well aware of what the issues are, and whether it's, you know, determination of ocean coastal bluff, canyon bluff, they're aware of that. And Leslie Ewing, the coastal engineer, gave her input at the same time. And with Kevin Murk as the biologist, Johnna Engel worked with him, again, to define what was the sensitive habitat. And so I feel like we have, you know, ironed out as many of the critical issues with this property from a coastal standpoint in order to bring it to use a cleaner package. Thank you very much.
Any other comment? Anyone else who would like to?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mike Frye. I'm the father of Greg Frye. My purpose in walking up here this evening is to point out that I, on occasion, use that trail, but find it difficult to walk on. I'm 77, I'm in good health, and it is not simple getting up and down that. I've used the other trails along the street. To me, that trail does not serve a unique purpose. I'm over near there quite often, and on occasion, see cars parked along there. I do not ever see numerous cars with people trying to fight their way down that trail. I do see it as you go down to the park, where there is plenty of parking and plenty of beach access. The other thing is, I've been in the, for numerous years, in the landscape construction, retail, wholesale nursery business, and very well acquainted with many species and types of plant material, and have no problem in seeing that the type of education, or did I say veg-ucation? I thought maybe I said education. The type of vegetation that would enhance that, also would stabilize and help make that, instead of the side of a hill that is covered with dirt and grass, and more conducive to erosion, would be satisfied and taken care of through proper planting. So my recommendation is to approve this-- So, my recommendation is to approve this project, and move forward so that the proper types of plants are being planted, and that becomes beautiful, rather than quite ugly as it is at the moment. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Melinda Udi. I hadn't planned on speaking, I just would like to bring up two points that I came across today. I live on the east side of the freeway on Yurba Buena, and I feel I'd like to speak for a lot of people who come in on Thursday nights through Sundays and are not here to speak. A lot of homeowners are weekenders from the valley, and I see every weekend, regular people, families with their dogs, walking down Yurba Buena to cross the freeway, and I think the first access, the first point that they see is that trail, the lot we're talking about. The next one would be where the sign is the entrance to the state park. I've not heard anybody speak about the dog access, I know it's a sensitive subject on our beaches, however, North Point is where we can walk our dogs. And there is, I went up today myself to park at North Point, and I discovered that the lot was full, and I was surprised that the lot was full by, it looked like vacation, the sun shields were up, they were in there long-term for the day, unloading their kids. They were not just there to use the dog park and leave, which had normally been the habit. They were there, the spaces are being taken for the day, and I think that's going to continue to grow as word spreads. And second, I found it, just today, I heard that they had two lots there, and I was hoping we could see what are the two lots, is there a chance of that being completely closed off, or is that not even relevant? That was it. Thank you.
Don't be shy. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Rachel Kovesdi, applicant's representative. So, I was remiss in actually not answering a question that I heard earlier, should have done it then, will do it now. There are in fact two parcels, adjacent parcels, one of which is owned by Greg and Jeannie Frye, the other owned by the Frye and Mueller Family Trust with other family members. So, we can't really do much about that, these are separately owned. I did hear a comment that the restoration plan included ice plant, and I can assure you that it is our intent, A, that's not true, but B, it is absolutely our intent to restore maximum habitat value. This restoration and enhancement plan will have a monitoring component by the project biologist, who I can tell you is meticulous, going through there and picking out every little annual grassland rhizome, and making sure that it's something coastal and native and drought tolerant. Let me see, as far as Mr. Martoni's comment about where did the creek setback start, it is in fact marked from the top of bank, as agreed upon by US Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the project biologist, coastal staff, so it is not marked from the drainage center line. And as you heard from Mr. Frye, Coastal Commission staff, including Justin Burr, Daniel Robinson, and Mark Johnson, the coastal geologists have all been on site, so they are not making their determinations from their ivory tower in Santa Cruz, they have been here, they have spent a lot of time on the site prior to and subsequent to analyzing all of the project technical reports. And finally, there was a question about retaining walls, and for that answer, I'd like to turn this over to Chris Parker, the project architect, because he'll be able to answer that technical question, unless you have other questions for me. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Chris Parker, Morro Bay. First question, Mr. Lucas, you had asked about the driveway and whether retaining walls were there. At this point, we're not proposing driveways for the retaining wall, more just fill slope and grading it out in a culvert underneath the driveway, trying to just limit the amount of construction in that area. The retaining walls on the north side, which is actually part of the structure's foundation, the foundation will be supported on caissons, and the lot varies, obviously, you've seen from the existing lot photos. In the garage area, there will be fill, but that's fill coming from the, that's fill coming from the other portions of the site where the construction's happening as well. So, there'll be a retaining wall going down the north side as well, but within the structure's space. And it's visible in the cross-sections. Yeah, in that situation, we showed just the grade beam, more closer to grade, if you go back one, you'll see the garage, because the garage, we basically need to fill in that location to keep it level, and you can see on the north side there, which would be on the right, we have retaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public at this point? Very well, we will bring it back to commission for discussion. Let me, just so we don't forget, let me start out by asking if anyone has any ex parte communications to declare.
Yeah, I met with Mr. Frye today on the lot.
I ran into the madam that was talking about the dog walkers, so while I was looking at the lot.
And I had a meeting with Ms. Koveski on Monday, so, and none of the information that was discussed at that meeting will have a bearing on my decision tonight. Okay. Who would like to lead off? Why don't you give it a go, Richard? I can see you're reaching for that microphone.
First of all, I appreciate the amount of work that staff has put into this project. And one of the things that I sent out to staff was a question on my interest on how this project is going to integrate with the emerging issue of climate change and sea level rise, and I was given a document, or the document that Earth Pacific, the consultants were analyzing a lot of the information there, and there was a lot of science that was blown in here. And I started looking at some of this information, and some of it is not exactly correct. And it's kind of looking, I'm looking more at it as not specifically as a little picture, but as a bigger picture. And one of the issues in this report, and I'm referencing the Earth System Report that was written by your associate geologist, Richard Gorman, and I understand that he integrated with the Coastal Commission and talked to them, but I've been involved with issues on sea level rise and climate change with meetings in the Ocean Protection Council for years, and trying to get emerging issues that all coastal communities are dealing with. And in this report, there's, you know, I don't want to dissect it and start, you know, start looking at it too technically with the science, but there was, there is a lot of, lot of science in here, but one of the first things that caught my eye, and I'm looking at it from the bottom of the, toward the end of the report, one of the things that he talks about, the tsunamis, the tsunami inundation, and he talks about the Husky Fault, and the data that they used regarding how they determined the 100-foot flood, 100-foot and sea wave run-up amounts. First of all, the latest data regarding the Husky Fault Line and the issues regarding that had to do with the Diablo Canyon analysis, and in that analysis, several years ago, when, before Diablo was built, Abalone Alliance said that there was another fault line there called the Shoreline Fault, and now there is evidence that these fault lines are interconnected. And the data that is given in here does not, is antiquated, does not match up with what the latest data is. And using the, after the Tokyo earthquake, the earthquake that occurred there, that data in this analysis was used, but there are several things that have been omitted with regards to that analysis. So, I have, I have an issue with that part of it, okay? That your numbers regarding sea level rise, regarding 100-foot tidal surges is not correct. Another thing, the Ocean Protection Council had a, for years, had this King Tide Program, for those of you who are not familiar with it, are, these are, they reach out to public and have people take pictures of king tides in all of coastal commission communities to get a better understanding what is happening in our coastal areas. I, just in the last 10 years, I have seen a substantial amount of changes and sediment differences just in our area with regards to that. The other problem that I have with this report was, I've always had issues with using mean data, like mean lower level water lines, or, these are averages, okay? When you start taking averages, the problem with averages are, and especially in the environment that we live in now, the standard of deviations and the variances are all over the map, and you draw a little line through the thing, it looks like no big deal, but the reality that's happening around us is not reflective. And this particular area, this particular home being, you know, to me, coastal bluff or canyon bluff, these are semantics, okay? This is on the beach, okay? You're building a house on the beach, and you're putting it right next to a bluff, so you have to reinforce the bluff just to build the house. And this particular drainage swale is, is the amount of runoff that's going to be historically, we start going, looking at history, like going back to data from 1980s, this data is going to be antiquated. This is going to be quite a bit different, the reality is going to be quite a bit different. Now, I don't understand, and I don't like want to get into it, but I don't understand how, on the other side of that creek, how somebody was able to put a concrete blast wall, basically, that was allowed. And when I look at the data, when I look at just how, where you're measuring your bluffs and the erosion that had occurred, and I think that there was a communication to our council by a concerned citizen that more accurately represents on the erosion issues going on in this coastal canyon bluff, or this whole bluff area. And that's one of my major concerns. The other concern, as far as the trail goes, I use a lot of the different trails, and I'll be honest with you, the trail going right there by the state parks, you know, where you go at the end of Yurba Buena, it's a little bit challenging of the, between that trail, this trail, and the one at North Point, which you just take the stairs down, you know, this, you know, that one has stairs, but this one, you know, has, gets a lot of use. The other issue, one of the speakers mentions, is the amount of usage this trail gets. We have a residence, that's true, but we have a huge vacation rental community, basically, that, you know, we go from, you know, we go from, you know, 10,000 people to 40,000 peoples during some events, and this particular trail does get used, used quite a bit, especially during high seasonal events. And I think I'll stop right now, and then that somebody else have a chance, and then we'll follow up.
Well, I appreciate a lot of the care that's been put into the project. It is difficult to buy a parcel on the coast of California and develop it, no matter what the nature of the lot is. And some of my concerns are from being a former bluff owner on Chesapeake Bay on the east coast, where we had a home on about a 15-foot bluff, and I know from that sort of more serene kind of waterscape, how bad erosion is, especially in the worst conditions that we have. As I was walking the site today with Mr. Frye, one of the things I was really trying to be sensitive to is, can I imagine what Richard's talking about in terms of the storm surge and the nature of the volume of water coming out of the culvert? And, you know, the only thing that really gave me any kind of, I guess, satisfaction in thinking it wasn't going to be a huge issue of erosion was that the culvert is there. I'm not sure who maintains that culvert, or whose responsibility it is to maintain that culvert, but if that culvert's there, that the so-called hillside, whether it's creek dune or ocean dune, is really a steep precipitous place that I would imagine is going to get quite a bit of erosion, but if that culvert is not maintained. So, I think there's a big difference between the area that has these larger setbacks up the bluff versus the side that is actually toward the creek, which is a bit of a concern. Now, the erosion doesn't mean the house is going to fail, because it's on caissons, but I do think there's issues there that could be a concern. And I appreciate going to the Coastal Commission first, I think that's where some of the most important technical arguments are going to be, and it is hard for me, even as much as I'm sympathetic to Richard's comments, to think that I've got a better definition of bluff than the geologists for the Coastal Commission have, especially since the city's also looked at that. To me, the biggest issues are, you have a site that you have to have care for, you have a site that is on a beach that the neighbors, the vacationers are going to use, it's on a highway, that's a scenic highway for our community. So, you've got these different scales of things, and I think the immediate technical concerns of the bluff and things, I think are, to my way of thinking, I'm not dissatisfied with what I see. My concern is, I don't think the building's as good as it could be. I'm not persuaded by that elevation's even true compared to what I see in the drawings. I'm very concerned that as the house moves toward the beach, the beach scene that we see from the other side, I'm not sure shows the long side of the house in a satisfactory see from the other side, I'm not sure shows the long side of the house in a satisfactory way. And, yeah, that one, I think that's as good as it's going to be. I think as you move to the north from that position, I think the proportion of the windows and things is really not the best way to see the entry to the town. So I'm very concerned about the elevations on the north of the project. I'm not as concerned as I initially was based on the comments I've heard about the nature of the driveway. I think there are some small-scale hill and technical issues that I imagine are on the other property at this point, that at some point would need to be addressed. In effect, it seems to me like there's some kind of retaining condition being created that on their adjacent property, they're going to have to accomplish some kind of runoff through this property in order to kind of keep a pond from occurring there. That was just something that seemed to be at the site when I was looking relative to the marking. It is a lot of material to move. I think the concerns of the neighbor are somewhat mitigated because this benching that's going to occur. And it does appear that the entire top of the bluff is being taken away, based on the site plan that's been brought here. Some of that's being cut as a bench for the outside walkway that goes to this patio to the waterside. And then some of it is going to actually be the retaining wall that creates the crawl space for the south side of the house. So there's quite a bit of movement there. And I'm not an expert in cut and fill, but it does seem like by the time you get to the garage, there's going to be another retaining condition created, that it's likely it could balance pretty well. But you're going to have a substantial crawl space under this house. I mean, it's important to note that, my guess is you've got at least four or five feet of crawl space on that side where the trail is at this point. So I think there's issues, there's some aesthetic issues. The biggest thing that I'm torn about is this nature of access. I appreciate the fact that the site is being restored, but this is also the time that if there was going to be an access to put it in such that the access is accommodated and the restoration can occur. We sat here when the state park came through a few months ago, and my recollection was there was a tremendous amount of discussion by the neighbors that they did not like all these trail accesses cut down the hill into the park, and that they were pleading with the park to actually cut off some of these access points. So I think we have to balance this need to accommodate larger numbers of people. I've been here many times when it's parked solid along the, in the parking lot in the park, along the bluff street to the south. And as was discussed today, the point is parked through full too. So I can see that there's a functionality of the access through here. And I'm very open to discussing if we would want to recommend to council that this access be structured in this because of the commentary that we've had here. And the state specifically said, think about that at the city level. They didn't want to take a position on it. So it's kind of a cultural issue as far as they're concerned, not a habitat issue, it's a cultural issue. So I think that's the thing that, in listening to the discussion, listening to the people talk on both sides, and especially trying to envision in a vacation community with a vacation economy, how to privilege that aspect of the discussion. Because it's a voice that I don't think is completely here. But I do appreciate the lengths that were gone to change the footprint, to reduce the size, to reduce the bulk. I'm not talking about the bulk of the house, I'm talking about the fenestration of the facades primarily. And I do appreciate the habitat plan that is taking out the ice plant and putting things back in. I'm still a little confused as to exactly what's happening past the patio on the top of the bluff, because these indicate that those contours are being cut back. And it looks like that retaining wall does extend perhaps even past the face of the adjacent house with at least a two- or three-foot kind of slope cut into the top of the hill. So I'm not sure these renderings we have indicate those kinds of smaller-scale systems or the nature of the way the project looks from a longer distance away. But I do think it's a parcel that can be built. I appreciate the lengths that have been gone to, and I think it's pretty close.
Thank you, Michael. Jerry?
Yeah. There's several issues with this house and this lot, and it's a really, really tough site. So, you know, I commend Chris and all the consultants that worked on this. The issue of what is what as far as stream and beach bluff, you know, comes to my forefront of mind. And that would pretty much determine whether this site is buildable or not. I don't claim more expertise than the state geologist, but I have seen, you know, wave and ocean run-up up into that culvert, past the concrete. So if ocean water is there, is that a marine bluff or is that a stream bluff? You know, I've also seen, during El Nino events, I've seen that stream running, you know, four feet high in the bottom there. So I think we have the potential for, you know, a lot more erosion and a lot more ocean erosion on heavy storm, high tide, king tide days. So I think that's a big concern. Like Commissioner Luca said, this is a caissoned house. So I don't think we have potential for structural failure. But I think I'd like a little more clarification from staff on if ocean water is present at the bottom of a bluff, is that a stream or is that a beach?
So, my experience with this specific scenario, I've probably encountered the same question half a dozen times, and had discussions with the Coastal Commission, specifically with Coastal Commission geologist Mark Johnson. Actually been out on a site with the project geologist Rick Gorman, not in this city, in Pismo Beach. Previously, we were looking at wave run-up in arroyos, determine where the bluff ended and where the arroyo started, because we had no bluff setback from the edge of the arroyo, but we do from ocean bluffs. And even when there was indications that once in a while it happened, you know, you had wave run-up that went in there at sort of unusual tides or storm events, they sort of made the same finding they did here, that that didn't constitute an ocean bluff that constituted the edge, in that case, an arroyo. That's my experience in seeing them address this in the past, being out on the site, standing next to them when they talked about it. So, right or wrong, that's what they've looked at in the past. So, and I know that they've had conversations about this same site. And the last time I saw them do it was about a year and a half to two years ago, in the Shell Beach area in Pismo. They stood on the edge of the bluff, they discussed these arroyos that went up into the project site, trying to determine, you know, bluff setbacks to those features.
So you're content that this is a stream setback, stream bluff setback rather than a marine bluff setback?
I believe that to be the case, based on, you know, my experience with the folks that were involved in preparing the studies here. This seems right in line with what I saw them do on a couple of different occasions, same folks. So I'm comfortable from that standpoint.
Okay, okay. Seems like that could be a point of appeal, you know, or could possibly be. So, just trying to bring these up. I'm not finding a position on that because I don't think I'm qualified on that. But as far as the pathway, you know, that and the walkway down there, I think that's going to be an issue that's going to be brought through the courts and to the city council. My comments are, I've seen, in my time living in Morro Bay, I've seen a lot of people on that path over a lot of years. So you look on any of the Google Maps or aerial maps from 10, 20, 30 years ago, there's a walkway there, there's a pathway, you know, void of vegetation. It's also, I've seen a lot of people come and park on that short street when North Point is full, or prior to when we had North Point, when there was still the motel out there. They would park there and they would take their dogs down this access point, because it was the closest place north where you could walk your dog without getting a ticket from the state park. So that is a major consideration for anybody who has dogs and ever takes them to the beach. There's, what, eight parking spots at North Point, and they're filled up pretty quick. And so this is, you know, a dog-walking access point. And I usually just walk on the beach illegally, but we won't go there. The other, one of the other points that was brought up that I am really concerned about is combining the driveways for this and the associated lot. And I think this is our chance to minimize the, you know, the grading and also the paving coming across the city's property there, and also creating a condition that if that property is going to be used for a higher purpose, that they conform and would pay the cost to create, to bring it in line with a parkway or, you know, bike trail or whatever's brought forward from the city, you know, in a future date. So I would like to have a condition of that, that both this lot and, was it lot 23 or 22, I forget, have adjoining accesses and minimize them so that you could do a half-access from each, if possible, do a half-access from each lot. Because that would, it would make sense to develop that from, combine that and conjoin that. The other thing is, just looking on the site, it looks like if an easement access, I'll go back to that, is going to be required, it could come across through the city property and then actually come down to, essentially with maybe a couple of switchbacks, down to the concrete culvert and the concrete stream bed there, and then continue the access along the stream bed. You know, that would not be accessible during, you know, major flood events, but it would be accessible 99% of the time, and except for El Nino years, would be accessible during the lowest, you know, most of the time. There may be some requirement for some random, you know, stones or something, some random paving, you know, such as the LA stream bed type conditions. And so I think that could be a problem solver that could get both sides together on this instead of creating a huge fight through the courts for many, many years. I could see this being tied up in prescriptive easement battle for years and years and years. So that may be something that the applicants maybe, may want to look at. The other thing is the aesthetics of the house. And I'm sorry, Chris, but I think you have a, you know, I know you were working under, you know, under conditions and by your client, but I think this would be, you have a huge opportunity. You have a seven-foot rise from grade, you know, at the low point of grade to floor level, finished floor level, at one point there on the north side. I think you have a potential here where you could actually raise this house up, create much more iconic structure, you know, not similar to the one across the culvert, but you could play off of that with your caissons and create a much more iconic building. And cut your grading down, raise your height up, bring your patio up another two or three feet, and minimize the grading and the retaining wall on the neighboring property to the south. So I'm concerned about the aesthetics. This is going to be a gateway structure. It's what people are going to see with the stream bed, this culvert there, it's going to be what you see when you come into Morro Bay. And I think it deserves a better treatment than what was here. And I think that could solve some of the problems and some of the neighbors' intentions with the patio. Okay, let's see where I am here. The other thing is, I'm in support of prohibiting shoreline protective structures. For one thing, they only hurt the beach. And one of the things that the Coastal Commission had mentioned that I haven't heard come up is a delineation, and I'm assuming it would be a short picket fence or some such structure like that, of the ESHA setback boundary that would delineate what is ESHA and what is private property. I would like to see a condition on that in there. If it's not already in there, I didn't see one. And the other thing too is just a restriction on private access or private trailways down to the beach from the building site. So unless they're doing a public trailway, public access, I would like a condition to restrict any private access or private trailways down to the beach area through the bluff. And I didn't see that in any of the conditions either. Okay, I think those are the main points that I see on this project, and I'd like to hear what the rest of the commissioners have to say.
Okay. Well, I guess it's my turn. Okay, just a few, you know, a few comments. With regard to the view impact of this, you know, I think, one thing that hasn't been mentioned is, in terms of the view impact from Toro Lane and from Highway One, is the fact that the house will be very low compared to the viewer from those two sites. Just looking at the site plan, it looks to me like the top of the roof, figuring a person's eyes are, say, four feet off the ground, it looks to me like the top of the roof will be only about three feet above the eye level of a person on Toro Lane, and about seven feet below the site level of a person on Highway One. So the potential to obstruct views to and along the coast is pretty minimal from that point of view. The other issue is the fact that there's really going to be a very large view corridor that exists on this lot even after the house is built. I figure that the view corridor that's going to be left is about 45 and a half feet to the north of the house, even after the structure is put in. So the other thing, then, the other issue in terms of view from the beach, you know, I think a good bit of the house will be, from a lot of angles, the house will be concealed by the bluff itself, or largely concealed. And with regard to the retaining wall and the fence as visible objects, I think that those are not going to be taller than the existing fence on the adjacent property. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure- So I, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure to what extent that's going to be significant. Also, the, the view of the house will be obscured to a large degree from the north by the bluff and the existing residence that's there. There was some discussion early on, oh, and I would, I'm sorry, I would like to start out by thanking not only the staff, but I'd like to thank all of the citizens that submitted comments. I want to assure you, we've read every word of everyone. In terms, there was, there was some issue early on as to whether the ESHA on this property consisted of wetlands or stream habitat. It sounds to me from the discussion tonight that that's been largely settled to, in, in terms of it representing a stream habitat rather than wetlands. If, if we need to discuss that further, you know, I'd be happy to go into it, but it sounds like that may be a settled thing. Getting to the issue of coastal bluff versus stream bank, you know, the, the methodology that was used by Earth Systems Pacific was not original. And it's, it's not by accident that they used that particular methodology. That in fact is the methodology that's required by the California Code of Regulations when, when dealing with this situation. It's actually spelled out in the CCR. So, so that's in terms of, you know, in terms of the state definition of what's, what's coast and what's stream, that's, that's pretty well defined. In terms of our local coastal plan, to me, you know, the, the significant differentiation between the, between a coastal bluff and everything else is that the toe of a coastal bluff has to be on a beach. Okay? It, not, not on beach sand or not on sand, but on a beach. And to me, the surface of a stream, the bed of a stream or the bed of a gully or the bed of a, of a drainage channel is, is demonstrably different from a beach. So to me, that kind of ties in with the state requirements and kind of ties in with the, the way that Earth Systems Pacific approached this. I'm pretty well satisfied with, with what they've done in terms of making that differentiation. Coastal access. I was, okay, I spent a long time down on the, down at the beach, which is not really a punishment, you know? But I spent, I spent a good deal there. I went down, I went down to the beach, I went down to this area on Saturday because, because Saturday was a weekend and it was towards the end of the summer and it was a beautiful sunny day and there were a lot of people there. And, and I went to this site first and there's people using that trail. I, I would say there's probably, there were probably, in the time I was there, on, on this particular property, which was a half hour, 45 minutes, there were at least four different groups of people that, that came up that trail. That being said, I also looked, walked to the south and looked at what other access routes there were. There are at least three additional trails to the beach coming off of Beach Comer, north of Yerba Buena. Now, two of those are pretty steep and kind of narrow, but one of them has approximately the same topology as this trail. And, you know, it's really, it's about 100 steps away from, from this trail. It was, as a matter of fact, during the time that I was down there observing, a lady who was at least 11 months pregnant, walked down that trail without any assistance. And, and a young, and a young man who appeared to have a gait disturbance and some developmental disabilities also used the trail without, without any difficulty. Going south again, going down Trinidad Street, there are a number of smaller trails. Again, these tend to not be steep, but they tend to be up and down because they're going through the dunes and they're not, they wouldn't be great to traverse. But when you get down towards the Moro Strand, the trails are very broad and very easy to use. And then of course, there's the engineered trail and the numerous casual trails that head off towards the Dog Beach from North Point. So what I did on Saturday was I looked to see, okay, what's this, what's, what's the activity level? And the way I did that was to look at the number of cars that were parked adjacent to each trail. And what, what I discovered was that the North Point, the, 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 the trail on Toro Lane, the trail on this property, when I arrived, there was only one other car parked there. And that was about 11 o'clock in the morning. By the time I left, there were four, there were four cars there. On the other hand, along Beach Comer, they were parked cheek by jowl. I mean, there were 50 or 60 cars parked in Beach Comer. Now, I realize some of those probably belong to residents that live on, on Beach Comer, but a lot of them had kids in, in wetsuits getting in and out. Pardon?
Excuse me, that's where the surf break is.
Yeah. And then of course, the, 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 the parking lot at Moro, the day use, the day use area at Moro Strand was full and the day use area and the parking lot at North Point was full. Went back on Monday again because it was cloudy and it was a weekday, it was, it was, it was foggy. And, but basically the same pattern existed. There were, there were no cars parked on Yerba Buena, I mean, no cars parked on Toro Lane. There were probably six to eight cars parked on Beach Comer, about a half a dozen cars in the Moro Strand area. And I didn't, I didn't get up to the North Point parking area on that, on that occasion. So it seems that, it seems that preferentially some of these other trail, it seems that while this trail is used, preferen, it seems that preferentially some of these other trails are used more. But the, the thing I really took away from this, the, the thing I took away from, the kind of the take home lesson to me for this was the impediment to beach access in the Yerba Buena area is not the number of trails, not the availability of trails. There's not, there, there needs to be more parking during peak periods of time. That's, that's what's blocking public access to the beach at this point. And that, that may be relevant to some of the, some of the city owned properties in this area. So the other thing with regard to the access trail is that it, it's, if it, if it should remain on this property as, you know, as a condition of development, it, it can't remain the way it is. I mean, it, it obviously, you know, is the, the area, the, the area right next to Toro, Toro Road is very steep. And unless there's, unless there's stairs put in, which of course are not going to be accessible to certain groups of people, or maybe switchbacks, I don't know. It's, it's going to be a much steeper and less inviting trail than what exists there now. So that's an issue. And then the other issue that really concerns me is, is the habitat restoration. I mean, this is a, this is a, this is a very degraded piece of property from a habitat point of view. It's, it's covered with, you know, ice plant and annual grasses. And, and so the, you know, what, whatever goes, whatever area goes into providing a trail is area that is removed from habitat restoration. And so I'm not really sure where the trade off is on that. And then the issue of prescriptive easement. There, there are very definite requirements for prescriptive easement. There, there's a list of about four requirements. And we, we as a body at this point have no idea whether those requirements have been met or not. It's just not, you know, that evidence has not been presented. We do have some, we do have some evidence of significant use and past use and we know, we, we kind of know by common knowledge that it's been in place for a number of years, but we haven't, we have no idea to what extent that use was hostile, which is one of the requirements. It has to be against the wishes of the owner or at least not with the owner's permission. And so we have no idea what in the past may have been done in terms of granting that permission. And the owner has to have done nothing to try and prevent it. And, and I'm not sure if the fence would qualify as an effort to prevent it or not. These are all questions that I don't think this group tonight is really prepared to answer. The usual agency, the usual agency that takes the lead in prescriptive easement actions is the coastal commission. And they also have the resources of the attorney general's office, which we don't have. So, so I'm, I, I think, I think definitely, I think definitely, I, I, my feeling about the prescriptive easement issue is it's, it's probably more properly a state issue. The easement is, the easement is granted in favor, not of the city of Morro Bay, not in favor of the residents of Morro Bay. The issue is granted in favor of the people of California. And it seems to me that, that a state agency would be better prepared to, to carry that process forward. So I think as part of this whole discussion and when we get to the area of recommendations, I would be probably in favor of recommending to the council not to pursue that at this time and, and defer to the coastal commission. And, and finally, I just want to, you know, I, I, I think your points are well taken, Jerry and Michael, in terms of, you know, the design of this house could be more creative. It could be, it could be more innovative. And not something I had really concentrated on, but, and no, no offense, I mean, it's a matter of opinion, but, but I, you know, it could be, it could be a more, a more, a more attractive design. Now, I realize, I realize the, the floor plan is kind of almost set by the constraints of the site, but, but in terms of design and style, it could be juiced up a little bit,
I just want to kind of follow up with the easement issue and the trail. There is, there is a state parks sign down there that no dogs and no campfires on there. So it-
Excuse me, it's dogs on leash.
I'm sticking up for dogs here.
And I'm a dog lover too. Yeah, a dogs on leash and a campfire thing. So that, to me, that, that kind of colors it that this is a known access.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I wouldn't argue that point. I wouldn't argue that point at all. But what I'm, all I'm saying is the whole prescriptive easement thing is, is there are technical requirements that have to be met in addition to that, that we, that we really have no information as to whether they've been met or not met.
Okay, okay.
I guess my only concern, Dr. Teft, is when you say it's a state issue is they specifically looked at it and said it's our issue. I mean, that, that's, that's what's interesting to me because, and it's especially interesting that they didn't say we don't recommend it because of habitat restoration. They could have said that too. Their biologist could have said, we don't want an easement through here. But they didn't. They said it's, it's something the city should look at, correct?
Can I just clarify, when you say the state, are you talking about state parks or coastal commission?
Coastal commission, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I think that's, that's who fundamentally pushed it back for a community assessment of it, right?
Michael, and let me just clarify, I wasn't saying, I was suggesting that we not deal with the issue of, of the trail itself. I was just suggesting the prescriptive easement, should it go to that? I, I have no, I absolutely agree with you that we should make a determination about, about whether an alternate trail is desired or not.
Well, one of the points too is if, if the city owned property at, off of Toro Lane becomes parking, then, then another trail access there would be much more desirable. So you also, you know, counting the cars doesn't necessarily, you know, you know, give you the whole view because you also have people walking down from, from Sanzabar and stuff. So, so I can't determine whether this, you know, whether this is a viable alternative. But what I do know is there's going to be a fight.
Yeah, but I, but I've met with-
And so if there can be a amicable, you know, solution from the applicants and, you know, and the declarates, you know, and they, that say it's a prescriptive easement, it could, it could shorten the time to, to approval of this project considerably. So that's, that's all mostly what I was bringing up too.
Well, on, on the other hand, if this, if this commission were to require an alternate trail access as a condition of approval, then the, the whole issue of prescriptive easement becomes moot. There's, there's no, there's no reason for it.
Does it go away? I don't know. Does it make a lot more sense, you know, from a, we don't have to figure all that out standpoint? Probably. So internally, this is probably worth putting out there. We've had discussions with the coastal commission staff about this over time. In fact, today they sent us an email and they said, oh, we're disappointed that you didn't require access. They didn't say prescriptive easement or anything or go after that. They said require the access. And we, the last time we had talked with them and after over several conversations actually, they were pretty lukewarm on it because there is access immediately adjacent. Now coastal commission loves its access, so to say they were lukewarm on something says something about it. And they realized that the trail was going through an, an area that was environmentally, establishes environmentally sensitive habitat. So I think they were kind of, that's what, when they were kind of pushing it off onto the city, they said, okay, go look at this and figure out what you want to do. When it didn't include that back, I, I, my response today in my email was just what I told you, that the last time you guys talked to us about this, you were kind of lukewarm on it. Now you're saying you're disappointed that we didn't put it in there. And they said, well, there's been some interest in, in, you know, obtaining the easement or keeping that easement in place. And so, you know, now we, we've raised it up a little, up, you know, the next, the next bar. And so that's something that was, I think recently, it recently came forward because it's not, you know, that was not the tune they were seeing earlier. And so internally, we've talked about the prescriptive easement portion of it and said that's something that's really a, a city council direction you have to go after. You're absolutely correct though, that if you think we should have a path here and it can be realigned elsewhere, meaning not in the current location, then that's completely within the purview of the planning commission to require that. And that's what the coastal commission was kind of coming down on too. You have that requirement sort of outside of answering this prescriptive easement issue.
Well, so I think, you know, the question, I think if, just to kind of put an envelope around this part of it, it seems to me the question is basically, I mean, because it, it is kind of a zero sum game. It's, it sounds, it seems to me the question is, do you want to see a greater area of habitat restoration or would you prefer to see the access maintained? And I'm hearing from sort of the majority of the commission that you're favoring the access. That, am I reading that correctly?
I think it's where, where the, how the access is brought through too, you know?
I, I, I'm, I'm open to, to the access because it's there. And, and I'm open to the access because in my opinion, what Richard was talking about, we're going to have events that a lot of what looks like is mitigated is going to be underwater. And so it's the hillsides that I think require the mitigation. Once you get down there into that zone that represents the, the flood, flood zone, I think you're going to have the seasonal kind of, of things that show up on our, our beaches anyway, the periodic, you know, I was just noticing this week, there's some of those small dune plants are starting to pop up. We've, it's, we've got an incredibly deep beach right now. I can't remember it being this deep for a long time, but we've got kind of some stability up there that if we get this El Nino like they're talking about is, is, is probably going to be substantially different. So that's, that's my take on it is I, I would hope there would be some way to accommodate the path and, and design it for the path.
Well, I mean, that could certainly be included as a condition of approval and include a mechanism for staff to review the design of it prior to construction.
We have conditions for just that event.
I'm not sure if I'm ready to approve this project right now. I think I'd look, like it to, I'd like to see it come back with a more aesthetic design. I think this is an important-
No, I wasn't, I was, I was just trying to get consensus on that one issue. No, I wasn't, I was, I was just trying to get consensus on that one issue. And there's, there's a lot more issues.
Okay. Did, did we want to talk about the nature of this fence and retaining wall by the patio? I mean, if you, if you look at the, can you get the south elevation? Or, I'm sorry, the side elevation, the north elevation up, Whitney? If, one more.
Did you want to?
The north, north elevation. Yeah, I misread it. It says side, not south. Yeah, I mean, if you look at the right-hand side there, the retaining wall and the fence seems to be going pretty far out there. And I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, the fence extending that far past, it looks like that's on the neighborhood of, hard to tell. It might be as much as, as 20-plus feet past the face of the house. And again, that's cutting into the top of the dune, which I'm also concerned about.
I'm looking at the site plan of sheet A1.2 that shows the patio, which is about 18 feet deep. And then you do see wall, I'm just going to take a wild guess, maybe 12 feet beyond that?
Says 23 feet on it. If you look at sheet A1.2.
I see, you are correct.
You got 18 foot and then 22 foot, 10 and 1/2.
Yes, thank you.
To the end of the retaining wall.
That's, that's a 40-foot retaining wall, and it looks like 30 feet, maybe 30 feet of fence.
And it's going to block off the view from the neighboring residents to the, for their north view, so.
It's 42 inches high.
It's 42 inches high on the downhill side. It looks to be-
On the high side. On the high side, it's 42. Then you've got the retaining wall, which looks to be somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple feet at least.
A couple, it sort of, it's almost like a foot and a half up to about three.
Yeah.
Right at that point. And then there's the railing on top. I mean, you could condition that railing on top to be open. It's, it's needed as a guardrail, I believe, for part of it.
Well, I appreciate the privacy for the patio part, but then there's a part that seems to extend out another, at least 10 feet, that I'm not understanding that.
20, whoa, oh, the fence part.
22, almost 23 feet from the edge.
I guess in a way, if I was concerned about the top of the bluff, I would say, can you bracket the patio such that there might be a small retaining wall without a-
Right.
Fence on top.
So that the patio sort of sits, nestles down into the bluff? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
That, that keeps the need for, for taking away the whole top of the bluff, the length of the wall.
Well, that would be satisfied, too, if you raise the floor level, the finished floor level. So if you raise the finished floor, you're going to, you're not going to be, you know, it's, it's not going to be as problematic getting the garage in, and it's also, you're not going to have as much retaining wall, you're not going to have as much cut, so.
But you're going to have more retaining wall on the other side, right?
Well, you can, you might be able to treat that with open caissons. You know, you change the aesthetic of the house and have open caissons there, you're not going to have a fill on that, or you're not going to have a retaining wall there. So, and that would, that would be, you know, a rift on the house across the, across the way. So that's one way to handle it. Chris might want to say something. Can we, do we want to open a public comment on that?
We'll reopen public comment for the purpose of hearing advice from the architect.
Chris, again, the issue on the height, there is no height left to raise the house with the average natural grade. And we can't go a flat roof. If we do, we're back down to, we're in the same situation, because we're down to a 14-foot height limit. So we're, with that midsection of the house, we're at the height limit. So we're kind of stuck in that midpoint there. The only thing we could do is dig down deeper, which we're not hoping to do that either.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to avoid. I mean, we would have the, we would have the potential here if we thought that was important, that we could give you a variance of another foot, foot or two to, to bring that up. If, if it was more critical to, to eliminate the grading, because I don't think we're having a height, a height problem, a view problem from this, from Toro Lane or from Highway 1.
Yeah.
So we would have the ability to possibly issue a variance to let you raise that.
Correct. It was based on just sticking, not asking for that favor, basically, and sticking within the average natural grade.
What do you, while you're up here, what are your thoughts on, on the discussion we've been having about aesthetics?
Aesthetics? Part, part of the design's driven by the shape of the floor plan, like was discussed, and the fact that we need the caissons underneath, so we were trying to, you know, conceal some of that as much as possible and keep as much of the grade, grading, the, keep as much as the, of the export on site. So that's where the, moving it to the garage area. And then you can see in the sections, kind of, some of that got leveled around underneath for the crawl space. There isn't, there's only a few areas where there's actually a decent depth in the crawl space, basically right at the crux of that trail currently. But it, it undulates through there. And there's not, it's not as large as you would think, the area that you end up with for a height in the crawl space area.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, as long as you're up here. Could you address the issue that Michael was bringing up, which is basically kind of, why does the excavation and the retaining wall continue due west from the patio rather than kind of making a 90-degree turn there and leaving the, the top of the hill intact?
Part of that was just to kind of have, we have the patio area there for, for use and kind of have a little bit more of a flat area that's somewhat usable, because there isn't much else on the site that's usable, especially once we get the restoration of the habitat. That area is outside of the esch, so it was kind of just trying to get a little bit more usable space.
Kind of a yard area.
Yes.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Is that a comment open?
Yeah, and he's pulling this out, so it's flattening this area off.
Okay.
Is that a comment open?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question then?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Betty Winholz, again. The chalk that's laid out on the dirt on the north side looks as though it goes right to the bluff top. And, and yet you say there's a 25-foot setback there. So is there missing bluff there that you're cutting, counting back from? But why does the chalk look like it's on the edge of the bluff stream?
Well, I, I think I understand your question. I think I understand. You're talking about the escha setback. The escha setback starts at the stream bank, not at the top of the bluff. The 25-foot escha setback starts at the stream bank rather than at the top of the bluff.
It's on 1.2.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for further discussion.
Well, it kind of brings up the point, are we worried about overall building height more or cut and fill? I think that's the point of discussion on this.
I think the, to me, the thing that is a bit of a concern is where does the bluff maintain its integrity and when does it get disturbed? Because I think there's going to be cut no matter what. So it's the limit of cut and the, the impact of the disturbance that I, I wish there was a way to, to kind of mitigate on the thing. But I was, I was more concerned about what you were saying about in terms of the amount of potential redesign. Is that something you, you would suggest a continuance? But then they could appeal the continuance to the, how does that work?
Right, you can't appeal a continuance, just saying.
Right.
Okay. Well, I don't know if we want to let this, I think, I think it's our job here, especially after our, our design guidelines, that this is something that we need to address here or give our, you know, we could either deny it, and then they could go to the city council with what, with what's here, or we could, you know, they could appeal it, or we could ask them and see, you know, we could continue it if they want to do a redesign and come back with a different, a little bit different design. So I think that's, that's where, those are our options.
Is, would that be contingent on the access, trail access, being discussed with the city?
Staff?
Okay, can you repeat that question?
Well, if we had a continuance, you know, one of the solutions Jerry was throwing out there is the potential of trying to accommodate the access in a combined way on the city property as well as the private parcel. And that, that's something in and of itself could be very difficult to, to get figured out. But would that be part of the continuance to try to come up with where that trail might actually be?
I, I think we would want to see that.
Sure. And just, just, just to kind of respond to Commissioner Luer's suggestion about, two things. One, any realignment of the public access here would reasonably be to the north, and it would have to cross through, as it does now, the excess or rather undeveloped Toro Lane right-of-way. And I just would also clarify that our zoning ordinance does allow for trails in the stream corridor. So your suggestion to possibly switch back or some other way, just direct it to a reasonably flat area, which is the stream corridor, versus alongside the, the slope of that bank up from the, the stream corridor is probably a pretty good idea.
I think there's a lot of ways to potentially solve it, but, you know, it's kind of, if the continuance is based on trying to solve that as well as potentially open up then some of the aesthetic issues and the resolution of those things concurrent with each other, that still means that if they would choose not to do that, what's the ramification?
We, we deny it.
The continuance would come back and they request us to deny it?
No, we deny it at this point.
They request a decision.
Yeah.
They request a denial.
We request a denial and they go to the city council. Would be, what I would see, is that, would that be the appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, you, you continue the project with direction to make changes to it. If they don't want to make some of those changes, then they can come back and tell you that, you can make your decision, which probably would not be favorable. And then they would be able to appeal that decision to the city council.
Or if they want to go ahead right now with what they have, we could deny it now, they can take it straight to the, appeal it to the city council, right?
Certainly. I would not recommend that as a course of action on their part.
Right. Okay. But that would be their option.
I think, I think it might be useful, since we seem to be moving in a particular direction, it might be useful to provide the applicant with some of the things that we are in agreement with, some of the parts of their proposal that we are in agreement with. I assume, let me just, I assume that we're in agreement with the escha setbacks as they're, as they're currently plotted and endorsed by Coastal Commission?
Mm-hmm.
No?
No, because I, I questioned the, the earth systems bluff area, what they say it is and what the rate of, the rate of, how you put it, the degradation or the rate of scouring that has occurred. And also, you know, you can't mitigate something you don't have. And I think that there is, there is some, some of that, those issues I have with, with that right now.
Well, okay, but, I mean, so that, you're, so you're sort of in a disagreement with the bluff buffer area?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But the escha, as far as the, the stream setbacks and the, for the environmental, the environmental setbacks, the environmental-
The habitat.
The habitat setbacks, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So then, I guess we need to talk about the stream setbacks.
Well, I think, okay, once, once again, from staff, we got the delineation that this is the, the codified way of developing the setbacks, and we may disagree with it, but I, I think we have to kind of go along with what, what's been codified in regulation and law. At least that's what I would, you know, I would say. So, you know, at that point, I think we're like, you know, I wouldn't presume, but my vote would be, you know, I would be in favor of the, the accepted stream and bluff setbacks and the escha, the escha setbacks also, the habitat setbacks from there.
Realistically speaking, realistically speaking, that's, that's what, that's what's going to happen anyway, honestly. Because it is, it's in the CC, it's in the California Court of Regulations, it's right there in black and white, says this is the way, you got to do it. And if, whether we, whether we ask for something different or not, the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Commission at least, maybe the council is going to say, "Nuh-uh." Plus, I'm not sure, honestly, Richard, I'm not sure how you could have a bigger setback from that bluff and still develop the site. I don't, I don't see it happening.
My biggest, my biggest concern, like I said, is the scouring occurs where you've got the opportunity to scour. And I, I don't really remember significant specifics, but my sense is that culvert is V-shaped or U-shaped with at least a three or four-foot rise on the sides. That as long as that's maintained, it, it shouldn't be an issue. If that culvert wasn't there, I would completely agree with Richard. I think that, that side of the hill is, is pretty, is pretty, pretty tough to maintain. But if that concrete's down there to keep it in, it's acting like a retainage condition or a, something to prevent that, that scouring. But I do think you're going to see significant scouring at the other edge.
So just back to the, just for clarification, I put this slide up. It says building envelope, but it also shows the 25-foot stream setback and the 50-foot setback from the coastal dunes. So maybe we could just focus on that particular issue, since that is a question that's before you. And I was just hoping that exhibit would be helpful, apart from the what is a bluff issue, perhaps?
Yeah, at, at this point, I think, you know, I'm resolved that this, that the accepted footprint, that this would be an acceptable footprint, but.
I'm hearing pretty much agreement on that, on the, on the escha setbacks.
I, I agree. I'm very sensitive to Richard's concerns. I think those are more ones of risk than obligation on, on our part. But my, my sense is that east part of the footprint, I'm sorry, the west part of the footprint on the right is the part that I'm not sure I've got, you know, it's that patio area with the, with the, with the crown of the bluff. And I know the ice plant would be taken out, so that you, it's going to be a completely different material that you're going to be seeing in there. Yeah, but that's, that's the area that I'm concerned about in terms of codifying that footprint like that. I'm not sure, I want to endorse much of a creep to the west, and I'm not sure, I like the retaining condition that goes the 40 feet past that.
Well, if we, if we allow a higher height, then we get rid of some of that retaining. Yeah, it's a direct trade-off, you know. Also, you know, there, this is a nine-foot ceiling height, nine-foot plate height. So we could, we could restrict plate height on there if we, which would give us another foot, but it wouldn't change anything about the grading. would give us another foot, but it wouldn't change anything about the grading.
Well, you could, I mean, you could also do the same thing by a flat roof. You know, I mean, he's, he's saying it's, you know, I mean, that gives, that gives you three feet, which, and the retaining wall is three feet, six inches, I think. Yeah.
So we could, you know, if it's a, you know, we could require a flat roof or-
Well, I think if it's a continuance, these are just issues that we're concerned about. You know, we certainly have a huge, and I think if you go up into Cayucus, there's a, there's a huge number of, I think it's the Toro Creek effluent zone, where it's a much more, it's a wider zone there. There's a series of houses there that are all flat-roof houses that I think are extremely attractive. The ones on Toro, just up the road, are, I think mostly very low slope, if I'm not mistaken. So I think there's a mix of successful solutions around there to take a look at.
Well, but, you know, the, the other, the other, the other possibility would be simply to terminate the, the retaining wall at the end of the patio and bring it to the north. So it, it seems to me that, you know, and also, I mean, you know, kind of requiring a flat roof solution, we're asking for better aesthetics, and yet at the same time, we're tying their hands a little bit as far as aesthetics. You know, I think what we're discussing, I guess, is avoiding the, avoiding the amount of excavation at the west end of the bluff. Isn't that, is that not what we're-
That's my concern.
Isn't that the problem?
And they're going to have to do some, they're going to have to do significant cutting once they get to the footprint of the house.
So, so then, you know, I think maybe the thing to do is just give it back to the applicant and say, this is, this is what we would like to get rid of, you know, this is what we'd like to see fixed.
These are concerns.
Here are some options, here are the options, and let us know what you'd prefer.
Right. And raising the finished floor height also reduces the, the amount of dirt work, you know, from the, from the driveway, too. So we're, we're like seven, seven or eight feet, you know, grade change from Toro Lane to the finished floor of the driveway. So every, every inch we get there reduces that. So, but I, rather than propose a solution to them, I would say, this is direction, you know.
I mean, there's, well, there's, there's probably a lot more solutions, weren't I-
Right, exactly.
Yeah, right off the top of my head, leave the house where it is, raise the patio.
Right.
You know, I mean, so, kind of, I think, this is our, our concern is the amount, is the amount of, the western, the western, is the amount of removal of the natural land form on the western end of the bluff. And I think, you know, I, I think that is, I think that concern is not only an aesthetic one, it's in keeping with our local coastal plan, which talks about minimizing the modification of coastal landforms. So are there other issues that we can either agree on, or?
Yeah, I kind of, I've got a couple.
We have a problem.
The Coastal Commission recommendation of prohibiting shoreline protective structures.
I think we're in agreement with that, are we not?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay. What about adding a fence, a small fence, or some other delineation at the top of the ESHA?
That's, that's a condition in there.
Condition 16.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I missed that. Combining the driveway accesses for this and the adjoining lot?
It's technically a different owner, though, right? Even though it's a, it's a trust, it's a different, technically a different owner.
But it's actually going across right-of-way, you know, or city property.
If, if you're indeed headed toward a continuance, we could say, you know, explore the possibility of a common driveway use with the adjacent property to the south.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask you a question? Because I'm, this is, this, the issue of the city-owned property is a little, is, is kind of new here. The, the parcel that the city owns is located where? Can, can you go back to the-
It is the right-of-way. Okay, we keep saying, it's just owned in fee. That's not normally the case in Morro Bay. That's-
Okay.
Many other cities own right-of-way in fee and have lots of it. Morro Bay has a little tiny bit, this is one chunk. I mean, it, you know, it's, again, in most places it's not all that uncommon. It just is here, apparently.
So then the mechanism for putting in the driveway is the same thing? It's an encroachment permit?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not, nothing strange is going on. It's like any other house getting built. This is like any other house getting built, yeah. And we have really wide streets in Morro Bay, a lot of streets, you know, 60, 70, 80-foot right-of-ways, and, you know, you've got 10, 12, 15 feet of unimproved right-of-way sitting there, you know, that you have to put your driveway through to get out to the street. I mean, this is that scenario, and it's all over town.
Right. Okay. So-
So then the other issues I had, or I'd listed, was, you know, to explore a pathway, you know, essentially using the stream bed as-
Right. Yeah. I think, I think, I think the, I think a proposed alternate trail access is one of the kind of number-one things that we've talked about. Yeah.
Can I ask real quick, as long as we're talking about the nature of the, the right-of-way, is there a definitive linkage plan? It's been talked about several times. Do we have an idea about where that linkage of the bike path and thing is going to come through?
We do. Yes. And it is in the area along Toro Lane, potentially. They've looked at it on the other side of the fence, along Highway 1. Seems like it's probably going to go potentially along either, along Toro Lane or the slope between the two. They've looked at both of those options. The whole idea about the parking thing was kicked around for a while. This driveway that's shown now is not in the area where that was going to be. But the county's abandoned that idea. They're not going after that now.
Now, a good part of Toro Lane is a private road, right?
Has an access easement over it.
It does?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah. And so they've looked at areas at the end going up, you know, how you get further beyond it, you know, that point. And so, not totally a set plan, but we have seen engineered drawings that show options for it. And then we've met with the county, both myself and the Public Works Director, Rob Wibbick, have sat down with them and looked at a number of different options, including putting parking there. We did look at it. The county seemed to think, I don't think, they were interested in doing that. So if it were to go, if that were to happen at some point, they did show a design that had probably an area for five or six cars at one point, but then they decided not, they weren't going to pursue that. So that would be, that would have to be something the city would pursue later on down the road. And again, the driveway location for this currently is not in the way of that. It was, it was further down to the south, kind of right adjacent to where your rebelling comes in there, where it was shown.
And my only point was, if we did have anything, even in draft kind of sketch form, that looked like it was reasonable to assume might happen someday, to make sure we take that into account. Because this is a really unusual parcel within really unusual perimeter conditions. So to make the best thing happen relative to access to those two sites, as well as to accommodate those plans, it's just, it just seems like people talk about it, but if we could actually anticipate it, I think it would be good. And if it could, if it was something that, there could be a sketch or something, it would help.
Sketch of the shared driveway, or the-
Oh, well, I think we'd have that. But just where these things are occurring, so that they know what to react to.
Oh, yeah, the bicycle doesn't, won't have any, the bike pack won't have any impact on this. It's not on this side of Toro, it's not on this side of Toro Lane. The only, I think, question that was raised was related about the parking, and that was a concept that was kicked around for a while, but abandoned.
So the, just to get back to the driveway issue, the current driveway is located on the extreme south side of the property, right? So what, what else would need to be done to make this potentially shareable with?
Just minimize the width.
I'm sorry, on the extreme south side of the property? Are you, where's my little guy? Like, this is sort of east and west and north and south. So the current driveway, this is where you mean, correct?
Right.
That's where they're sharing? Okay, I was pretty, you meant that. I was like, no, no, no.
So essentially, the adjoining property would, would access their property from the north side of their property. And if we can, it seems like the logical place that both of those would access from. So if we can combine that into a single driveway, or thereabouts.
Right. Okay, that, that would be direction, then.
Right. But there won't be another, another driveway at this point. It would just be designed in such a way that it can in the future be incorporated into. Okay, gotcha. Which, okay. And then you had mentioned, I think the one thing you mentioned previously was that there would not be, that there would be no private trails from this area to the beach, but-
Because I don't think we want to have an established trail going through the ESHA, or through the end, the west end of the bluff. If, you know, I'd just like to see that in writing.
I think if there's no accommodation for the public trail, that's something. But not, because if the public trail's in there, we are, we're not saying we don't want a trail. We're saying we don't want to say there's no public trail and then establish a private trail.
Right.
Or we don't want another trail, which would be private. Which shouldn't be a hardship. I mean, they can walk out the front door and go down the public trail, right? Yeah.
I just don't want to see multiple pathways down that bluff. And that may even be a Coastal Commission restriction, too. But just like to have it, have it in writing, if possible.
Although I would not be, I mean, just to throw this out, I wouldn't be opposed necessarily to them having some sort of connection that would make it more convenient for them to use the public trail. In other words, you know, if there's some way that they can step off their driveway onto the trail or something like that that makes it work better for them, that, to me, that would not be making it into a private trail.
It wouldn't be going, going down the bluff.
Right, right.
And then the other, other thing is to, I don't know how you want to state this, but just to create a more iconic house, or iconic design, and so.
So, you know, traditionally, so I think, I think we have our kind of list of things. I think, Richard, I think a continuance might also give you a little more time to kind of chew on the erosion thing and see, kind of, I mean, I'm not an engineer, I don't know if that means the caissons need to be different, or I don't know. But something to, so then, I guess, in the, in the past, we've kind of, at least had the courtesy of asking the applicant, are they willing to proceed like this, or would they rather we just deny it and they can appeal it to the city council as is? So-
I would suggest that you give them that opportunity.
Yeah. If, if, if Mr. Frye is, or Rachel is still here, we can open it back up to, to hear from them.
Thank you, Chairman Teft, Commissioners. Couple of points. Number one, the applicants are not interested in modifying this house in such a way that it would require a variance. We understand that that will almost certainly trigger a substantial issue determination by the Coastal Commission and a following de novo process that may last much longer than most of us will be walking the earth. So we absolutely want to work to accommodate your aesthetic direction. And as a matter of fact, anything that you can do to help us flesh that out in terms of, we heard the concern about western bluff grading. We're more than happy to turn that retaining wall 90 degrees at the edge of the patio to, to cut that off. So if you would like to condition the project that way this evening, that's perfectly fine with us. If you have specific other direction in terms of what this thing looks like, again, the push here was to subordinate the house to the surrounding natural landscape. I, you know, I've seen homes that were marketed as iconic, particularly in gateway locations. Most of them are big and imposing and tall, and many of them are flat and modern and things that draw the eye away from the view shed and to the structure. We were trying to do exactly the opposite. Our, our direction has been, from these applicants, has been, just make this house, you know, little and cute, and so that if people notice it at all, it's not an eyesore. And it's, it's something that you can look at, not really register, and continue to enjoy the beautiful views of the ocean. So with that in mind, and again, understanding that even, for example, putting a flat roof on this structure, that would trigger, I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, a height limit of 14 feet. So we would be in the same position as we are now.
Well, you would have a little more leeway to play with your finished floor level, but you also would have the issue of looking down on, you know, whatever utilities, mechanical equipment that goes up on a roof. So there's that.
Correct. So, so again, we're, we're striving to make this home, this residence disappear within the, you know, the scope of the, the view shed corridor, the ocean views from Highway 1 and Toro Lane. So with that in mind, if, if you're looking for something iconic, we need to know what that looks like that would fit into a non-variance, LCP-compliant home. So that's one. And then, in terms of the combined driveway, the, as you know, the adjacent lot is owned by other family members. So it's a trust. It's 6,000 square feet, actually 6,001 square feet. And so that would, and obviously, a big chunk of that is that little finger moving off to the south. So the actual buildable area is significantly smaller than 6,000 square feet. If the north side of that property is taken up with a shared driveway, again, we haven't analyzed this because it's not under Dr. and Mrs. Frye's ownership exclusively. Nobody's talking about construction on that lot at this point. So I just want to make sure that you've thought about the consequences of that type of, of a condition as well. That's a pretty extraordinarily constrained condition now. Let me see, what else did we hear? As far as no private trail to the beach, I wanted to ask staff if that was a typical condition on new residences?
If you're on a bluff-top lot in other areas of the state of California, they don't allow you to, the Coastal Commission will place conditions on your project that you can't have access down. So that's a pretty-
So, yes.
-similar, common theme.
So, so the applicants are certainly willing for the project to be conditioned for no private trail, certainly on the bluff side. So a little bit of a connector trail to the, to any public trail within the stream buffer would certainly be a nice accommodation for this family. And then finally, if you are looking at a continuance, I would ask staff, what are we looking at in terms of timeframe for getting back in front of the commission?
You need to get the plans prepared. I mean, it's kind of a, how long it would take you to provide us with additional plans. We have time available, you know, in, potentially in October. So, yeah, so we, both meetings in October are available, so. I mean, so you have to work on the plans, and then we could reschedule in that timeframe.
Okay. Mr. Parker's telling me that it would take approximately three days. But in any case, so moving forward, any specific direction in terms of articulation, fenestration, eaves, anything that you can give us, because obviously, we don't want to continually discuss. We want to get it right the first time. And again- And again, without incorporating anything that would trigger a variance would be appreciated.
Well, let me just, let me just make sure that we're clear on this. The whole discussion about flat roof, about variance, about changing the floor level of the house, all goes back to the idea of minimizing the excavation on the face of, or the western aspect of the bluff. So, you know, if you want to take the simple solution and put a 90-degree in the retaining wall, that would work, you know. But you have the, but the issue, I think, that the commission has with the current design was simply that modification of the bluff landform, which seems not totally necessary, you know.
So if that is the commission's concern, we can address that tonight and simply condition this residence to have that 90-degree turn in the retaining wall and not go beyond the footprint of the patio. And if that gets the job done and we can agree on some architectural conditions, if you want to tweak some things, we would love to finalize this tonight.
Okay. I just have, I have a problem with the plain Jane look of the house. Basically, it basically looks like a stripped-down, you know, track home. And I think it deserves, deserves more.
And which direction would you like?
You know, that's, you could take it as, you know, Schindler did it, Frank Lloyd Wright did it in Kentucky Knob, Neutra did it, Richard Meyer did it. You could take it in any of those directions. I, you know, that's what, that's what your architect is there for, and he's plenty capable. So, you know, we just, we just went through 10 months creating a design guideline. Maybe look through that. And so, and I don't think we could condition your project tonight to say, you know, exactly, you know, if you wanted me to design it, I'd be glad to design it for you, but...
No, but I think, no, I agree, I agree with you. But I think whatever direction we can give, and I, I think it'll maybe, it'll be helpful when Michael gets back because he's kind of the, well, he's, yeah, he's the architectural guru here. You know, what I, what I would, you know, explore with staff is if, you know, if we, since we, since we have, seem to have worked through most of the major issues on this, if we, if there's a possibility of giving them a short turnaround in terms of, in terms of the continuance, with, with, with no requirement for a staff report. Because I think the issues in the staff report, we've pretty much all dealt with. And the applicant will be giving us a presentation on the one kind of, I think there's one remaining issue, you know. And then all we would need is the revised conditions that we've discussed about the trail and the no protective devices and, you know. And it seems to me that we could offer, potentially offer them, you know, even a two-week turnaround.
Our agendas are full. We have four items on each of the next two agendas.
Well, I can tell you that the applicant would be satisfied with the first meeting in October, particularly given the fact that you have come to concurrence on a number of issues. And so hopefully, that would be a short meeting. The applicants would give a presentation on how we have limited the disturbance to the western bluff area and how we've better articulated the architectural features of the home. And I would caution that I think that this, this trail realignment issue, while the, again, the applicants have consistently been willing to offer a trail for dedication, the siding of that trail is going to require an enormous amount of coordination with the biologists, with civil engineers, with city staff, with coastal commission staff. So I would hope that a condition, moving forward at that October hearing, just stating that the requirement to offer a trail dedicated easement without trying to specify an alignment in the next month or so would be very, very helpful. That would...
I think we, I think we've generally been, in the past, we've had great confidence in our staff to work with, to work with applicants to come up with the final design on some of these things, recognizing that, you know, having given direction and, you know, staff pretty much gets what we're looking for, so...
The only thing is, as far as, not a mere dedication of, of access, but a development of access.
We have, I mean, had this thing move forward, we discussed this earlier, and so we have a full contingent of conditions that would apply to this, including the dedication. And it went pretty far. I mean, it was dedication, design, construction, maintenance, recorded requirements for these against the property, and future owners. I mean, it covered all of those things. So we, I mean, you're asking to realign a trail that potentially could have prescriptive issues related to it, so it seemed appropriate to provide conditions that covered the gamut. They certainly are free to, you know, argue their side of it, that they don't want to do some of those things. But those are the types of things that we came up with draft conditions in case we got to a point where it could have gotten approved tonight. It was, that's where we went. We covered all the bases with regard to the conditioning and the timing. These certain ones would have to be met prior to issuance of a building permit, others prior to final of this, you know, construction of the trail, prior to final of the home, those types of things. So we did spend a little bit of time paying attention to this, and so we do kind of have a game plan on that side of things.
Can I ask, with the nature of the setbacks that we established, is that for structures that meets the ground, or can things cantilever out past that?
In the ash setbacks you're talking about? Typically, it's, you know, the obvious things that are allowed are fences and eaves. Generally, it's that. But also, there's mention in our local coastal plan for, say, trails through an ash area could be constructed like a boardwalk. So that would be obviously more than just necessarily at-grade construction. So there's probably some leeway, but not a lot. Do you have something in particular?
No, I was more, I was more concerned about the floor plate extending cantilevering out past the, not the structure itself, the structure that would be cantilevered past the caissons and things like that. You know, they've got a couple of places here where they're angling things potentially for view, but also it's kind of tangent to the setback arc. And if we're five or six feet or eight feet above the natural grade at that point that we're going to try to reestablish the habitat for, does it matter if the upper floor would go out past that setback? Because my understanding would be the setback's primarily there for structural considerations relative to maintaining and establishing the quality of the landscape up until that setback.
Like sun, like sun, for instance.
But I guess, you know, if the roof's able to cantilever over, I was just wondering if you've got a seven or eight-foot capacity there.
My guess is the coastal commission probably took issue with that.
Say no.
My experience with that is that's the case.
Yeah.
They don't usually allow you to do things like that.
And then Commissioner Lucas, there had been a question. We've been given some direction to make this house better-looking, and...
I didn't say that. I'm very sensitive to those remarks. No, I just think that, I don't know if the documents we were given adequately explains the nature of the north facade, which to me is the most critical one, especially as you start to pull more north on the beach and see the fuller length of the house. I think there's, there's an opportunity there. I don't know where you're, you know, we don't see all the documents here. I don't know what the mechanical strategy was. I don't know when you've got that kind of crawl space, if you could do things in the crawl space rather than in the attic. I mean, it's, I don't know if you're talking about radiant heat in the floor, if you're talking about, you know, warm air, you know, type of thing. So there's a lot of questions there, but, you know, to me, the flat roof obviously is a different type of look. I don't think it necessarily triggers it to be iconic. I think it just triggers it to be different. I think simpler sometimes looks better on the, on the bluffs. There's a lot of really idiosyncratic houses, everything from some of these Asian or aspects that are on exposed piles and things like that, as you go down toward Cayucas and things, and to these things that are sort of Cape Cod-ish, to the kind of, you know, stucco-bungalow kind of thing. There's all sorts of different looks here. I don't think one look is better than another. I just think they give you different opportunities. The roof, to me, if you don't take advantage of it, is something that seems to be causing other issues to show up. I'm mostly concerned about the facade pattern. Some of the windows look like they might be really modest size in what might be a 16-foot wall on that, on the side toward the creek. I would just be very cautious of what that elevation looks like, understanding some of the landscape, especially in the renderings, is quite tall. I can't get my sage to grow, or lavender to grow that tall, but maybe there's some miracle grow or something going on. But I would just say some of those elevations are really tall, and the windows are really small. And so where you've got the larger expanses of glass, I would just watch how that kind of profile that faces the northwest, as opposed to the west per se, really starts to look. And if it's on, if the caissons are exposed, I'm open to that. I mean, we've got all sorts of examples around town where we've got different types of, you know, exposure. That then introduces other problems in terms of maintenance and closure of the house and things like that. But I think we're open to that. I would just say it's, it's an open question. It should look like it's a house next to a beautiful stream that empties into the ocean on occasion, that's all.
We will make it so, or do our very best. Any other questions for applicants representative?
Okay. Thank you.
What's the continuance state?
We still, we still, we have further discussion, or are we ready for a motion? Would somebody like to...
I guess I'll attempt this. I move that we continue, that was, I have the resolution number, I don't have the...
Item B1.
The item number? We continue the item number to a date uncertain with the recommendations that we've brought forth.
We took copious stance.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Can we, can we do a roll call?
Commissioner Lur?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandalsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Teft? Motion carries for zero.
So we have, we have no unfinished business, and we have no new business this evening. We're down to planning commissioner comments. Scott, or, I'm sorry, commissioners, any further future agenda items, or...
I guess this could have been an announcement, but I came back from speaking at International Society for Environmental Ethics about several moribays concerns. And in the, in the nature of environmental philosophy internationally, people are fascinated by the application of things that we're doing here. I specifically talked about the wastewater recycling plant issues the last 10 years. Philosophers get into detail sometimes. They like to see that we're actually executing things with some interesting questions. They're fascinated by California and Germany, I can tell you that. So it was, it was a great, great to talk about our town and show some wonderful images. And I also wanted to say I attended the California Climate Action Conference, which was for planners, local planners, that I'll be sending Scott some notes on. But this was about almost 200 planners from around the state at Cal Poly last week, or earlier this week, no, last week. And fascinating things about the greenhouse gas emissions, our climate action plan that we worked on last year. Very interesting to see what the state of the thinking is moving forward to 2030 and 2050, where they think the state's going. So I was very fortunate to attend that, too.
I attended the meeting, special meeting that the city council had on the reclamation. And several people that have been following this project for a long time are kind of surprised that, first of all, we had a, the War Cap recommended a consultant, and then the city council picked a consultant. But during that process, they had like six applicants, and then, or eight applicants, and then most of them all dropped out. And we ended up with a consultant. But one of the things that was surprising to me, and I've been following this project since, well, this issue's in 2003, was that we're currently basically building the same kind of plant and moving it inland. Okay, now granted, that's a managed retreat, as, you know, the coastal commission would like to see managed retreat of critical infrastructure. But that, that was kind of like a surprise to a lot of people, and a surprise to me, that we're kind of limiting ourselves to that technology. And then second phase was to add on, you know, the reclamation, reclamation part of it. Now, where I, in industry where I work, in the aerospace industry, there's a thing called a Rube Goldberg. And basically, when you start, when you have a, a design that you have from conception, you can be a more efficient and more performance-oriented design. This, the oxidation ditches and all this technology that they're using is more antiquated technology. And by doing it that way, I think we are limiting ourselves as a city to a lot, a lot of Prop 1 funding and a lot of, a lot of other opportunities for innovation and performance. And to make an analogy, it's like, and it costs more. And to make analogy, it's like smogging a Model T for more than it costs you to buy a Tesla, you know what I mean? And I think that we, as, there's several people in the community that are going to be notifying the council, because they're taking council direction. But to me, that was kind of news to me, because I thought that we're still moving in a, that innovative technologies were still being open. And I think it's a disservice to our community to limit our technology in just doing that. And, and I would like to see it opened up a little bit more for innovation. And as far as the concern about what we're going to do with the water, if there's, you know, we're clean water, we don't have a, you know, we don't have a focus there, I think that's a wonderful problem for the city to have, is, oh, we got some Title 22 water that we need to get rid of, and I'm sure we'll find customers. And I think that, you know, we really, really need to, as a community, you know, for those listening out there, as a community, this is, this is the biggest project going. And one of the things that did come up, and one of the consultants, and I, and I like these guys, I do. And I mean it, you know. And one of them said, hey, we need this LCP. We need, you know, we need to have that, that as part of it, you know, as a concern. So that kind of comes back to the general plan LCP thing that, you know, kind of got to get a move on things in that respect. And other than that, I, I want to really thank you, Whitney, for all the work that you did on this, this job here. This was a huge, huge amount of work, and I appreciate you guys.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we may become a national leader for German wastewater tourism. Okay, Scott, community development director comments?
I had a, I had, I had a presentation I was going to give you at the end of this thing today, or to ask a question for a possible future agenda item related to height for homes. We have, let's see if we can, yeah, thanks. So we have the definition of height in the zoning code, and it says, "Height of a building means the vertical distance from the average level of the highest and lowest point of that portion of the lot covered by the building as measured to the topmost point of the roof, but not including ventilation stacks, chimneys, under six feet in width or length." And then B, the, the B section of that definition says, "When measuring various levels on a lot to calculate the height, the grades in existence on the lot as of January 1, 1986 shall be used." Now, I think we all know we didn't go and survey every lot in town in 1986, so basically, for the most part, we use existing grade for these types of calculations unless we have previously dated information that had grading on it. And then it says, "Any fill added to the site since the date, since that date shall be deducted from the present grade elevations." So if it's got fill on it, we take that off, we don't account for that, and then we, and that's how we determine the average natural grade. And then it goes on to say, "Any areas cut since that date, 1986, may be added to the present grade." So if you cut, you can go back up to what the original grade was if it was cut after 1986, and you can use that. I don't know if this comes up all that often, but this is how it's written, and so these are the, these are the, these are the possibilities in determining average natural grades, so you can determine height. So what do we do when you have a lot that had a cut that was prior to 1986? Do you get to add the cut amount back in to establish the original grade like it talked about for lots after 1986? Or are you just stuck and you have to use the existing grade of those lots? So if you had a scenario like this, where you had an existing house built in 1951 that was cut down into the slope, you see the dashed line running across, or that was the original grade approximated, it would seem, based on the way our height definition is, is listed, we would measure from the cut. You don't get the benefit because we have that point in time in 1986 where that's, after that point, you're okay. You cut then, you can go back to original grade. You cut before that, you don't get to go back. So I was just curious as to the planning commission's thoughts with the intent that I would be bringing back some sort of additional item later to do some interpretation on this.
I just think if you've got any operational problem with the definition that's in there, we've got to talk about it sooner or later, and we might as well talk about it prior to the general plan kind of thing where these things would be coming into effect.
This is a problem. I mean, we have, we have stuff that's, you know, we've, I have one right now sitting on my plate, and then I have another one that's probably coming forward that's going to have the same issue. And they rightfully pointed out, they're like, well, our house was, this was cut prior to 1986. If I did it after 1986, we'd be able to use the existing grade. We know what it was, we have retaining walls on both sides of our house. You know, we can draw the line, so we know approximately what it is. And they're like, we're being punished because we have an older house? They're like, that doesn't seem fair. And I'm like, well, you probably aren't wrong, but I don't know that it has anything to do with fairness or not. It's just, it's kind of a weird thing we have in the code because they picked that date and time and said everything starts from here, and then didn't really address what happens prior to that.
We, we had a project that came forward once, probably, I think, was the interim one, you weren't on the, I think I was the only one here on the commission. And we essentially gave them the prior, the, the prior natural grade. We, we assumed that what we were looking for was from natural grade, not from man-made cuts or fills. So we took that direction, but that doesn't mean that that was the correct direction.
Okay.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger discussion, really, because the, you know, it gets, it leads to the discussion of, well, is this whole thing of adding back in the fill and taking, is, is that the way to go? You know, in other words, do we want to do that for all, you know, because there's different effects if you do or if you don't. You know, if you, if you, if you allow the building to, to go from the existing natural grade, which doesn't exist anymore, you have the potential for some very tall vertical expanses, and we, we see that in places in town, you know. And not necessarily to, to, to a great result. So, I mean, I realize that there's this, there's the current issue, but then I think there's the bigger issue of whether this whole thing, whether the whole adding and subtracting really works from a community design standpoint.
Yeah.
I, I think any, anything to kind of help, help with your job is a good thing to put on the agenda, for sure. And integrate it with neighborhood compatibility. I think that would be probably something that we could kind of like lace in there.
I certainly could expand the discussion to talk about, I mean, whether we ground this word or not, but to talk about other ways to deal with these things, because a lot of cities don't do this averaging the way that we do it, you know. They, you'll end up having a height limitation that's from any point of site grade as you go down. And so then it's basically, you walk around with the, in our instance, 25-foot-tall pole, and from any point, you have to show that you're meeting the requirements. So really what you do is you run along the ridges and see what the grade is underneath those, and you get pretty detailed grading plans, which we don't always get here. We don't always get real detailed topo. So it's, you know, a lot of times it's extrapolated, and it's extrapolated off of a couple of points, so, anyway.
If we make a change as such like that, what we will get is we will get downslope houses that will add another story to the street side and upslope houses, which will all be non-conforming.
It, it, it can have that effect, yes. I'm just, I was giving an example of things that we could change it to. I wasn't suggesting that we do it, I was just saying, yes, there are, there are other ways to do it, and I've seen, you know, that work better when you're dealing with large facades. There's other ways to articulate the facade, other ways to step them back as well, so.
And that, that discussion, as, as opposed to the simple, very, you know, kind of circumscribed question that you asked in the beginning, but that whole bigger discussion, it would really be to inform the general plan process, right?
Agreed.
Because there's nothing we can do about the zoning ordinance here.
Agreed, yeah. I mean, I definitely want to get an answer to this thing because it's, I have a couple of them sitting there, you know, they're coming through, and it's, it's just, it's weird. We picked that date and time, and so it kind of screws things up beyond that, you know. You're like, what were we, why did we do that? And that was just because the model ordinances that came for the LCPs that cities were using picked dates, and we picked 86, and Pismo picked 88. I'm not sure why the two differ, but the wording's almost exactly the same, you know, as far as the date and time thing, so. And maybe I should ask the coastal commission that question, why these things came out? That'd be an interesting answer.
Do we, do we have, do we have real good, do we have good records prior to 86 or whatever it is in terms of?
The city's records are, you know, kind of spotty at best for most of the stuff that we have. It's just funny picking a grade time and place from 1986. It's not like the city has topo for every lot in town from 1986, it's just a random date that was picked. I mean, it didn't, and that's a common thing that wears in LCPs, so I think it came from that, that they picked that date to determine grade. I don't know.
So the, so I guess the answer to your question is, yep, bring it on.
Bring it on, okay. I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. So with that, we will bid you all good night and adjourn to the next regular planning commission meeting, which will be here at the Veterans Building on September 1st. Thank you.